I'd like to call the meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic by which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for public awareness. We did start at 5:00 with a non-meeting to discuss a collective bargaining issue. And then we also are happy to report, we have a new friend who's shadowing and learning the LCTV ways. So we're excited that he's here with us. Welcome. And we are going to go ahead and move towards review and revision of the agenda. Anything?
Yeah, so a couple of things. We're going to rearrange tonight the old business and new business to make sure that we hit new business first relative to the collective bargaining because that'll impact some of the annual meeting planning. And then there are a few links that have been adjusted today. So anybody in the public who has looked at stuff should follow along live because there are some updates.
Perfect. For the consent agenda, are there any committee reports that anyone would like to discuss more thoroughly or move to old business?
I'd like to move facilities to old business, please.
Okay. I'm gonna make a note of that. All right. Anybody else? Hearing nothing. And we'll move into the summary of non-public actions from December 21st, 2023. Ms. Ames made a motion to approve the December 6th, 2023, non-public session minutes. Mr. Polansky seconded the motion and the motion passed 5-0-0. Mr. Cutter made a motion to approve the resignation of Heather Dwyer. Ms. Ames seconded the motion and the motion passed 5-0-0. Mr. Cutter made a motion to authorize the severance payment without setting precedence due to medical necessity. Mr. Polansky seconded the motion and the motion passed 5-0-0. We will now move into presentations and recognitions. So we will start with our curriculum report, unless you, we can start with special education as well, or you both can come up and however you guys choose to do it.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
So my report's a little short and sweet.
I added a few numbers this time, though, that I haven't done in the past. So I just outlined the IEPs by school. GMS has 77, LMS has 72, CHS has 86. Of the other, which is the out-of-district charter and private schools, there are 13 students in that. So their total in the district when I, when the numbers were done, which was about mid-December was when I did the numbers, there were 248 students. Total Litchfield enrollment at the time was 1217. The ELL support by school, I added numbers this time to it. I don't think there have ever been numbers reported out on what we had for ELL students, but through the ongoing discussions through the budget piece, I decided that that was something that really needed to be tracked a little bit better. So I just outlined that the languages that are spoken in the school district, Spanish, Chinese, Russian, Portuguese, Albanian, Vietnamese, Filipino, and Thai. So there are quite a few of them. That GMS, so looking at it, so services are those students who receive direct services from our ELL teacher. Opt-outs are those students where the parents have opted out of services. They still qualify, but they aren't receiving any face-to-face services from the ELL teacher. And monitored students are those students that have been very successful, gone through, and they're now at a status where we monitor them for four years to continue to make sure that they're making progress and not falling behind. So GMS has nine students that receive services and no opt-outs, no monitored. LMS has five students that receive services, two of the, two additional students have opt-out. And then at CHS, there are two students that receive services, four opt-outs, and one monitored. It's a total of 23 students. So the number of opt-out services is six students. So that's basically 29 students total receiving ELL supports and/or having opted out. So 504s by school, so GMS has 37 504s, LMS has 46, and CHS has 52. Again, 504s are those documents where it's all about accommodations and granting a student access, not specially designed instruction. And district updates, so I've been working with teams on really how to understand some outside reports. Outside reports are those reports that are provided by either doctors or other professionals. So really working with what do we do when we get them and how to understand them, who needs to process them, and that kind of thing. And then we've been, I've been working with one of our developmental delay programs and the contracted BCBA at the elementary school with some materials that have been needed. I went through the 1930s building recently, started mining some things out that were preschool materials to help really develop this classroom, create, help to create with the BCBA's guidance, these learning spaces and more of a rotational schedule through the classroom. That way, we have separate spaces for some of our students and things are more defined with what happens in that classroom. So that's been really successful there.
I'm sorry, you're using the 1930s building for, what was the 1930s building?
No, no, no. There was furniture and storage.
Oh, yeah.
So I was mining furniture. I went in and took a look the Wednesday before Christmas. And then when the BCBA was there, both of us went back and I was like, we have this, we have this. Is this what you're looking for? To really talk about what is needed in that classroom. Because one of the things that had come up was more supportive seating, which looks like chairs with arms on them. So we had to go through and kind of look and see what we had and that kind of thing. So really looking at bringing that classroom around and doing more for it. But onwards and upwards.
Any questions for Ms. Fowler? Hearing none. Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Ms. Widman, you are up.
Good evening. Happy New Year. Mine's also pretty short and sweet. Really, the big highlight is the work that we've been doing with the Professional Learning Committee. And my goal this year in separating the positions into the MLP coordinator and the building PD representative was really to put more focus and more ownership on the buildings to do some, to be planning some PD that met the needs specifically within their building. So I'm really excited. All three buildings have drafted plans. You'll see, the one that's linked up there is LMS. They have set dates and times and have little descriptions of everything that they have going on for the year. GMS is still exploring some of the options, but they have an extensive list of things that they want to be looking at. And I, I'm really encouraging that idea of a make-and-take workshop because I think that's a great opportunity for teachers to come in and see what other teachers are doing and steal ideas. And that's how we get better. And CHS has scheduled their first session, and it's a social coaching strategies workshop, which Katie McGary is giving. She gave it this summer, and the feedback around it was amazing, just on how to have some of those conversations with kiddos and how to encourage some of the executive functioning pieces. And so we've been trying to look at ways to get her to share this with, with other, more staff because the feedback around it was so strong. District-wide, we did a needs assessment. Each building looked specifically at their data, but our district-wide data shows that the three main areas of need based on the responses of the teachers and all staff is on differentiation of instruction, accommodations and modifications, and educating the whole child, which really is looking at the idea of the instructional as well as the SEL. So, and those are things that we're focusing on in different, different avenues across the district, but we will in our district-wide PD work as well. Grading and reporting, we had to postpone our meeting because we just didn't, there wasn't time to have collected enough of the data that we wanted to be able to start looking at. So when we meet next, the groups are coming in with specific data that their teams feel is appropriate for us to be looking at, to be able to compare the impact, start to look at the impact of changing the percentage of formatives and, and how that's playing out for us. So you'll see, those are just the questions that we had come up with at our previous meeting to have them look at in teams and in groups. And just a couple other points of information, we are going to be having a district data team meeting at the end of the first semester. So I'm excited to start to get that back in line. That was something we started pre-COVID, and it has been tough to get back on track with everything else. So the iReady Winter Test window actually opened today, or January 1st. And I linked in there the state updates on SAS and the SAT testing with the testing windows. It's pretty standard. The difference this year is that they are not auto-scoring the SAS writing. So those, actually, there's a very specific and targeted window that that has to be given this year because they are going to ship them out to be hand-scored. When SAS first started, that's how they did it. It takes a while to get them back, which is, you know, but that's how they calibrate the, the online scoring that we have shifted to. The only other thing that I didn't add on here, because I don't have a whole lot to report, but just as a, an FYI, I guess, we, before break, I started meeting with each grade level, grade level teams, departments. The two-day, I had two full days booked and ended up sick. So I'm making some of those up still after the break, but just taking the opportunity to sit down, talk to all of our teachers, our teams, see what their needs are, see how I can support them. And I try and do that a couple times a year. I know Mike and I sometimes will do it together. But this is something that I feel is pretty important. And so when I come back in March, I should have a better report out of some of the things that we're hearing and going to be focusing on.
I had a question about the LMS PD. It looks like they have this all scheduled out after school, one day a month. Are they meeting on a reg, is it the whole staff? Is it an optional workshop?
It's an optional workshop. So what we have, part of the, the PD rep, MLP rep, when it was one, there was a specific requirement in there that they were supposed to be doing building-based PD once a month. So that wasn't happening consistently. We started getting the ball rolling with it last year, but it was weird asks. So we've really targeted that this year by splitting it, and it's quarterly for the PD reps. And then the MLP has to do it around grading period, marking periods.
Oh, okay.
But LMS had, in terms of the three buildings, last year, they really had made a ton of progress. And Amy worked with, Amy did a lot of work with Karen last year to set some of these things up already. And so they just, her and Jacqueline have really gotten together to solidify it.
Yeah.
This year, so.
I like the idea of it being more consistent.
Yeah. And some of it's done at the faculty meeting. I know today Karen was there doing some work on some AI tools, I believe. Yes, okay. I was, it was a tool I was not familiar with. She was walking me through it today. So.
Excuse me. That's neat. Great.
So, working on it.
Any other questions for Ms. Widman?
Can you just define what social coaching strategies is?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a way to, like, she works on building those, like, executive functioning skills with kids and getting them to be able to advocate for themselves. Not, it's not really geared for the younger kids. It's more of a, what you, trying to get some of the older kids that may not have those advocacy skills to say, hey, I need help with this, or can you show me how to organize? And, and it's working with the teachers on how to engage kids in having those conversations and build those skills with them. I think that's the best way I can summarize it.
Yeah. Life interaction skills kind of things.
Yeah. This is our, this, the, the woman that runs it is, she's also the teacher that teaches, she has a communications course, and it's Communications for the Real World. So it's trying to get kids that struggle with, you know, communicating their thoughts and how do they do that appropriately depending. So that's really kind of been her focus, is getting our kids to be able to communicate better and advocate for themselves.
And then on the formatives, you have something, you say anecdotal information. I would certainly be interested in anecdotal where we are with the format, right?
Yes, absolutely.
Because that was a big change. And I would, I would imagine that we were tracking that kind of all year.
Yes. And this is, the data looks different depending on the department sometimes. So I wanted them to be able to say, what is going to give us the best picture? Anecdotal will be across the board, but I don't think that we can consistently make a decision based solely on anecdotal data. So I want to make sure that we have that because I think honestly, to me, that's one of the most important pieces. But we have to have the numbers to look at it and back it up as well because sometimes with the anecdotal, the louder voices come across as the majority when that may not be the case.
Sure.
Any other questions? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right. Our student representative, which is the next part of our agenda, was not able to attend tonight. So we're going to move on to community comment on agenda items. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person. They shall be made without the expectation of a response by any school board members to matters raised by such commentary. They can be made on topics that are contained in the agenda at this time. If there are comments that are not pertaining to the current agenda, those can come up at the next community comment section, which will be at 8:00 or ever, whenever we get to it, whichever occurs sooner. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and open the floor for community comment.
Go ahead. Speak up.
Yeah, come on up.
Madam Chairman, while Mr. Oblenus takes his seat, I'd like to motion that we allow Mr. Oblenus more than the three minutes to present his facts to us.
Is there a second?
A second.
A second.
Did you have a timeline in mind, or are you just, however long?
I think, given the, the numerous emails Mr. Oblenus has sent to the board, which will be read in correspondence, I think certainly there's a lot that I would suspect would be shared this evening. And I think that would take more than the three minutes.
I don't disagree that it's going to take more than the three minutes, but I also, there's a reason why we have email correspondence. So I don't necessarily want it to be repetition of information that's already been provided to the board. So we have a motion and a second on the table. It doesn't sound like there's, it's just indefinite, is what you're proposing.
Do you, I mean, do you have a feel, I, I certainly would like him to be able to get all of his information out. Do you have?
Me too. I mean, 15 minutes, I, I.
Sure, that's fine.
Does that seem like, I mean, we have to have some sort of.
Absolutely. What I'd like to do is, is recommend that I just kind of read the letter that is probably most pertinent, and then just briefly explain the documents I sent to you, and then let you respond from there. And I think that would limit the conversation.
I think 15 minutes sounds about right, then.
Will you amend your motion?
I will amend my motion to allow.
And you amend yourself.
amend your second.
Yes.
To allow 15 minutes.
All right, great. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? All right. Looking forward to hearing. Go ahead.
Thank you. Just a point. I, in the email I sent, there was actually three items I wanted to speak to. And I heard that you were going to have some other public comment later. So if you, it sounds like if I would focus on just the building at this point and then reserve comments on the second items for that period of time, would that make sense?
If that's what your choice is? Yeah, absolutely.
It's up to you. I'm just trying to accommodate.
If I remember, one was about the lunch.
Yes.
And then one was about personnel.
The Warren articles and how.
Okay. So the Warren article is on the agenda tonight. So you're certainly welcome to get into that issue. I don't believe the lunch issue is on the agenda tonight. So that technically would need to be in. I don't know if you're planning to stay for the whole meeting. I certainly don't want to limit you. If you are planning to leave.
I'd be happy to stay the full meeting.
Okay. All right. Well, let's, let's get going and see what we get to, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
First of all, many folks have known that I've been present at the FIC meetings and that last week, some of the things I brought up were discussed in the school board. I wasn't able to be here. I had a, I attended a play that my friend's grandson was in. And so that was the reason I wasn't here. The letter I want to read, just for people in context, was presented to the school board prior to that meeting, and there was discussion on that. So what I'd like to do is read that because I think it frames much of what is the issue that the things before us. So it's from myself, Ronald Oblenus, from 15 Review Circle to the School Board and a copy of the Budget Committee. And the subject is GMS replacement versus improved existing. Following the recent withdrawal of the offer for purchase of property which was potentially to be used to build a new elementary school, i.e. the replacement option, the Facilities Improvement Committee, the FIC, a subcommittee of the school board, is determined that it will recommend to the school board that a new elementary school will be built on the northerly portion of land that contains the current Griffin Memorial School. Upon learning of this development, I was surprised to learn that the efforts to reconsider if a new building could be built on the existing site did not include revisiting the option of making improvements to GMS, known as the renovation option. Having read the April 17, 2022 feasibility study, that concluded that issues such as the proximity to Highway 3A and poor drainage made the existing property where GMS is now located unsuitable for consideration of a new replacement school, I was completely perplexed as to why it was suddenly deemed possible to address those issues with the construction of a new school. As the proximity to Highway 3A and poor drainage is noted in the feasibility study as some of the reasons deemed to be sufficient to dismiss the renovation option, it raises the question for me to investigate, excuse me, it raised the question for me to investigate if the renovation option was truly vetted to a level of detail needed to determine if indeed the renovation option was not the better choice for addressing the issues at GMS. This led me to seek to determine what was done in evaluating the renovation option. The documents related to the current condition of GMS are found on the website of the school district under the heading of Reimagining GMS. This is where the April 7, 2022 feasibility study is located. It was noted in discussions at the recent FIC meeting that the answers to all the questions regarding what was considered in the evaluation of all options, including the rehabilitation option, are presented in the feasibility study. Having studied this report, I conclude that insufficient efforts to evaluate the rehabilitation option have been done. On 11/30/23, I presented questions to the school board and budget committee requesting more details on the rehabilitation option. I revised my questions on 12/06/23 to reflect updated information as presented at the 12/06/23 FIC meeting. A copy of those questions is found in the amendment of this document. At the 12/13/23 FIC meeting during public comment, I was present again to ask for responses to my question. There are key elements of discussion during that meeting that focuses the issue. They are principally related to responses that contain assertions that, quote, "you can't do that because," unquote, without sufficient reason to make that claim. Specific examples of such assertions by FIC members were related to the proximity Highway 3A and the inability to provide a security road around the entire building. These issues were used to argue that the rehabilitation option is infeasible. At the conclusion of the meeting, the FIC voted to recommend to the school board that the replacement option be progressed. Thus, understanding that I would not be receiving any meaningful considerations from my comments, and specifically, there would be no further consideration of the rehabilitation option, I determined to investigate what, with what information was available, whether it was reasonable to assume that a viable rehabilitation option can be found. I assert that the, that it is indeed possible to develop a viable rehabilitation option. Please consider the following reasons for my conclusion. In my evaluation of the rehabilitation option, I began by determining what was the, excuse me, that the most southerly section of the building should be demolished and reconfigured with new structure. This would eliminate many of the issues of the building, as this section is the oldest of the additions of the building. This would make space a bit, excuse me, this makes space available within the current property to add a security roadway that would encompass the entire building. Secondly, this would allow a security fence be installed around the full perimeter of the building that would provide protection against children unexpectedly running away on, and onto 3A. In 10 minutes, I solved the two stated fatal flaws given as precluding the rehabilitation option. As I continued to consider what removing the southerly section would further afford, it was immediately apparent that many new classrooms could be added to the site by utilizing the wasted courtyard space contained in the southerly section to be removed. I won't take the time in this letter to detail the additional thoughts that I developed, but I will ask the following question of the school board. If a rehabilitation option could be developed that would include a full perimeter security roadway, security fencing around the entire building, resulting in a total of 72,000 square feet as compared to the replacement of 80,000 square feet, have the same number of classrooms of required square footage as a replacement, enlarge the engineering space, add four special service rooms, provide new office spaces, expand hard areas, solve the environmental issues, including wet floors and mold development within the building related to poor air circulation, and meet the following codes and standards, which are State Department of Education Manual for School Construction, Codes of, Life Safety Code, Building Code, American Disabilities Act 2010 Version, Homeland Security 2018 School Preparedness Task Force, and Materials Condition Life Inspectancy, and at a cost of under $20 million, would you give it consideration? If the answer to this question is it can't be done, then I would refer you to, to the undated document of Reimagining GMS, GMS webpage entitled Griffin Memorial Needs Assessment, link below. And for those, this is, this is the document I was referring to that seemed to be not necessarily understood the last time. And this is what I gleaned off the website I just noted. Excuse me. This document is the basis for the question above and presents that all of the above can be accomplished for an estimated amount of $15,600. And that's the numbers out of this document. Assuming that the document was done in the same level, same time period as the feasibility study of early 2022 or late '21, I would agree that the estimate should be increased for inflation by 20%. It would provide a projected cost of $18,720,000, $18,720,000. And applying the rule of thumb guideline noted by the architect, that rehabilitation should be considered if the costs are less than 60% of the placement, which is now 26,580,000, that's compared to 60% of the 45 million that is now proposed, I can only conclude that to not fully consider the rehabilitation cost would be irresponsible. I would further argue that the proposed rehabilitation option, if developed to the suggested level, could possibly qualify for state aid in the, in the maximum amount of $7 million, resulting in a potential cost of $11,720,000 for the rehabilitation option. Based on the above discussion and reasons, I make the following recommendations in a quest of the school board table the current recommendation of the FIC to proceed with a replacement option, and further direct the FIC to reconsider the rehabilitation option to a level of detail equal to the current plans of the proposed replacement. Nope, just took off the. Sorry. The direction to the FIC needs to include authorization for funding of the consultants to support the review effort. I fully believe the time to undertake such an evaluation could be measured in weeks. And if further support my content. And to further support my content- And to further support my contention that the rehabilitation option could be fully considered, I offer to join the Facilities Improvements Committee and, if desired, chair the committee. The reason I believe this would be beneficial to the school board and to the overall assessment process is to note that I was a member of the Facilities Evaluation Committee that conducted the needs assessment for the former Town Hall slash Police Station building that currently houses the Leachfield Historical Society. As a member of the committee, I was, I entered the process with the expectation that a rehabilitation slash addition option would be the most feasible. However, the committee unanimously concluded that the best option was a new building. I will note that I was the one who prepared and presented the recommendation for the new Town Hall slash Police Building, in fact, what we're in today, to the very, to a very large crowd at LMS Gymnasium. So I trust I would have a little level of credibility to present results of further study of the FIC. And finally, I wish to note that I fully concur that something needs to be done at GMS. I toured the building on December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three, that provided confirmation of this assumption. However, my fear is if the public is faced with the yes or no choice or no or nothing, without being fully convinced that the replacement option is the correct path, then the answer will be no. Then the problem remains that students, staff, parents, and the school board will be faced with living with the current conditions at GMS indefinitely. Thank you for consideration of my thoughts and suggestions. So, just further to that, and I'll just keep on going unless there's any questions. But a couple of documents that I sent to you. This is the summary of costs that came out of this report, if you remember. And somebody asked me that, it didn't seem like it made sense, so I, the little reality check that I did on the side was actually kind of my own reality check in response to a question I had. Does, does these numbers still make sense? So I'll just read these briefly and so people can understand what is presented here. As a reality check, the core of the, of the building, that's the center that, the high va-, excuse me, the core of the building has high value. High-value functions include the gymnasium, the library, the cafeteria, and office space. And in, and there are other facilities, including classrooms, in the core. New classrooms would be built off the core. Classrooms will match the number in the proposed new building, which is twenty-seven. And if that needs to be adjusted up or down, that could be accommodated. The core has ten classrooms that could be repurposed or reused. Repurposed use would include nursing, special ed, or collaboration. The nineteen thirties building is restored in use in my, what I would consider a plan, which would eliminate the nineteen thirties building being the white elephant of what do we do with it? So the cost check is a reality that's now here. Twenty, so if we assume a twenty-four classrooms would be built in the new sections that will go on to the north and the south part of the core. That square footage of rooms would be, just as a easy number, we use a thousand that are required for kindergarten. The cost per square foot of four hundred and twenty-five is the current number used from the architect's most recent estimate. And the twenty-four classrooms then would be ten million two hundred dollars. Inflating that to, excuse me, in the summary over here in the architect's estimate, he had an addition of new building included at ten million dollars. So inflating the ten million to twelve certainly is reality check that these new classrooms would be in the ballpark of what the architect was talking about. So, conclusion, the inflated cost estimate eighteen thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars that I referred to in my letter needs to be considered realistic. Finally, or continuing, the question came up, how can we do this and not have total or substantive disruption to the school during this process? How do we, how do we do it and still maintain school? Actually, I think it's relatively easy. And actually, one of the interesting things is the temporary classrooms actually become a benefit in this case. And so, just for folks, there's a little one-page sheet. And, but I'll just read through the stages and hopefully people at home can follow along, but the school board has this as well. So, how we would tackle this to minimize impacts on the school function is that the first stage is we would build approximately fourteen new classrooms and any other rooms that we deem appropriate for that section to the northerly part of the existing building. Stage two, we would move to the south of the building, demolish the sixties building, that's about thirteen classrooms if I remember right. Stage three, when then we build approximately ten classrooms. And the important thing here is we'd build them in two stories and would have an elevator in it. And one of the important things is that, that's staged out here would then connect to nineteen thirties building, which would be rehabilitated, and that would solve the ADA issue in the nineteen thirties building. Stage three would include rehabilitation of the nineteen thirties building, and it would include an addition of gym space on the existing gym. Stage four, we would now move all student functions into the new north and south classroom areas and still maintain the classrooms on the portables. So that would allow us to work inside the building. Stage four would be convert the six classrooms either to the required size or, as I showed here, there's a possibility of making four classrooms out of that with each classroom having a dedicated collaboration space. Stage five is move the office people out into the temporary portable classrooms, allowing the, the office space to be renovated. We move all back in. Stage six is remove the portable classrooms. Facilities outside as needed, new roadways and parking areas and such as we deem would be constructed within this timeframe. So that's how it would be approached.
Do you, can I, can I ask a couple of questions?
Surely.
So, stage one that you've drawn here.
Stage one, yeah.
Is basically where the septic system is currently.
No, this is to the right.
It's to the right.
That's not where the septic system is?
The leach field is on the hill.
Not the leach field, I'm talking about the tank.
There are underground septic systems in that area.
In this area, okay.
Yeah, like some of the pumps that go out to the raised leach field, all of that resides in that field. If you go out, you'll see numerous personhole covers in that area. So there is stuff under the ground there. I don't know what it all means, but.
So just for, you know, consideration purposes, we wouldn't be able to use the building if we, obviously that, we wouldn't be able to do that first, right? That might be an issue.
Well, we, obviously, one of the things in engineering is you look at what has to be done when. So if there is relocations of utilities prior to the construction of that, that's, that would be the first activity within stage one.
Well, there absolutely is. I mean, stage three, you have, stage two, you have the demolishing of the thirteen classrooms in that first grade wing. That's where our boilers are for the whole building.
Yeah.
So, we'd have to relocate those.
Not necessarily. If I remember right, they are in, they're in the core facility. I think there's two sets of them.
You have two boiler rooms. One is in the stage three demo area, the other is adjacent to the cafeteria, so it's in a separate. I mean, we're really getting into kind of micro analyzing the detail.
My question, I mean, I have a few questions about your numbers and the square footage. You went down to seventy-two thousand square feet instead of the eighty thousand square feet. We started with ninety thousand square feet in the original design. We've been cutting down as small as we can while still maintaining the state guidelines for classroom sizes. So, how did you get down to seventy-two thousand square feet?
Well, I use what the architect recommended in this report.
Okay, so just the listing of this, the spaces that would be needed?
Yeah, in this report, there's a chart right in here. And he shows seventy-two thousand square feet in, in the proposed renovation. So that's what the figure I used.
Okay, so that's.
Yeah, so I just used what he used.
Propose renovation.
Yeah.
The other, the other question I have for Kyle is when we, when we first eliminated this option, it was due to the fact that his, his estimate of a renovation and addition project would exceed sixty percent of the cost of a, of a replacement building. So that wouldn't be the fifteen thousand that was noted, or the fifteen million, sorry, that was noted in his report. I'm wondering what the fifteen million included and what it didn't include to get to the sixty percent threshold.
Yeah, so we're gonna have to go back and ask Kyle that question. And we're also gonna have to make sure that the cost increase of fifteen million is applied by Kyle because it was his number to begin with, and we know, timing-wise, that, you know, we've seen a lot of cost increases and that. So that's, that's definitely a Kyle question.
So, I mean, I, I know that some of the feedback was, you know, we're getting very far into this, but I do, you know, I appreciate you taking the time to, to do these things. So I, I wanna just give you some of my feedback, just so that, just some food for thought. I noticed where you're putting the stage, stage three, the addition there. You know, we haven't staked it out, right? But that is, that is where we're really, really close to the property line?
No, it's not. Here's the, here's the property line, and I, I thought too. But ironically, if you look, where it closes near the exist-, the south end, which we're gonna demolish, that's the problem area. Where we put the, the section on north, we have all the space, we can build all up into the woods here.
So, but you're talking about attaching it to the nineteen thirties building, which is down the bottom.
See, what, what will happen down here is this footprint right here is the south end of the building. This all gets demolished and made into two stories, which cuts that.
I may be looking at your, what you drew incorrectly, but is this not?
If I may, we're really getting into designing the building, which is a conversation that we should have with Kyle.
But it's, it's two stories, so the footprint's half of it.
And, and we have a Facilities Improving Committee too. I mean, this, this plan came out over the weekend, over a holiday weekend, and we haven't had a chance to have the conversation yet.
So, right now's purpose is, is for community input, so I want, and at this point, we're almost a half hour in. So we started at six o'clock, it's now six-thirty. I wanna make sure Mr. Oblenis has hit his major points that he wishes for the board to verbally hear from him, as well as, I assume you're doing this so that the public can hear from you as well. So I wanna make sure you've hit your points in terms of a response from the board, in terms of questions from the board. I don't think now is the appropriate time to engage in that back and forth.
On the details.
On the details. I think, again, as the superintendent brought up, this is best suited for the Facilities Improvement Committee, as well as for our architect, who has done a lot of work on this as well, so.
But that being said, we do have old business where the new elementary school's on the agenda, and if the board wishes to have a continued conversation on the new school, we can use that part of our agenda to do so.
I, I disagree. I believe Mr. Oblenis's request and recommendation is that the board direct the FIC to spend more time reopening this option and investigating it. Is that, is that true?
I agree, yes.
Which would fall under B.
Right, so why doesn't the board make a recommendation to the Facilities Committee?
So, for, right now's purpose is, I'm gonna interrupt the board to say that this is community comment. And so this is Mr. Oblenis's time to go ahead and provide us with feedback. The board can get into discussions regarding your feedback, which I assume you're gonna stay present for during, when we get to that part of our agenda. It may or may not come up, but again, at that time, we may discuss and having the Facility Improvement Committee deal with this. But again, I wanna make sure you've gotten your points across, that you feel like you've been heard, and you've got, you've said what you wanted to say verbally for the board.
Yes, so I'd just like to conclude
Sure.
by reemphasizing, I am not here to challenge that something shouldn't be done. I'm not here advocating in any shape, form, manner that we do not have to do something in GMS. I'm fully supportive of the board's actions to date on recognizing that. I'm here to do that. As I said in my letter, my concern is if we go down the road of replacement without everyone being fully convinced that that is the right answer, then you'll get the same answer that you got the last five times, and then you'll be really stuck. And I don't, I don't think that's, I wouldn't wanna be in your shoes if that answer comes back.
I appreciate your feedback. Thank you for taking the time, and definitely have a seat. We'll get more into this as we go along.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to make a community comment? Seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close community comment for our first community comment session. As I indicated before, there will be a second community comment session either at eight o'clock or where we get to it in the agenda, whichever occurs sooner. Moving into correspondence, I'm gonna have Ms. Harrison jump in and give us an update.
So, since our last meeting, which was on December twenty-second? Twenty-first, thank you. So long ago, it's a blur. We have several emails, including nine from Mr. Oblenis, so I'll just go through them in chronological order. On December twenty-third, Mr. Oblenis sent a letter, a recommendation to further evaluate the renovation of GMS. December twenty-fourth, Jen O'Sullivan sent the draft minutes over twenty-twelve, twenty-three meeting. December twenty-sixth, Andrew Carter sharing the announcement of passing a former interim police chief, Mike French. Mike Jettie sent, responded with funeral arrangements for Mike French and responses from Peter and Tina with condolences. December twenty-eighth, Jen Bishop was, is a Nashville school board member looking for information on how we manage our social media accounts on our Facebook page. I took the opportunity to reply to her.
I did too.
You did, okay, okay. I sent her our guidelines and our social media guidelines and invited her to ask any more questions. We can offer some help. December twenty-eighth, Jen Grantham sent a picture of the LMS stage curtain that we used end-of-year funds last year to install, that has been installed. It looks beautiful. I'm excited for the LMS Drama Club to get started up. December twenty-ninth, Mr. Oblenis sent a message requesting a meeting schedule for the first of January. I responded confirming that we would be meeting, clarifying the agenda policy and the date, time, and location of the January three meeting. December thirty-first, Mr. Oblenis proposed staging, the staging diagram for the renovation addition of GMS and requested extended time during public input. December thirty-first, Mr. Oblenis sent a summary of emails to the school board to include the budget committee chair, including his letter. December thirty-first, Mr. Oblenis proposed a cost summary and a reality check for the renovation addition option for GMS. December thirty-first, Mr. Oblenis sent funding options and the estimated cost to taxpayers for the renovation versus replacement options. January first, Mr. Oblenis requested a copy of the needs assessment of GMS conducted by state employees. January second, Mr. Oblenis sent, resent the proposed cost summary with a response from Mike Jettie that he was unclear on which needs assessment Mr. Oblenis was referring to. I responded to the board, including Mr. Totten and Mike Jettie, suggesting the publication of the Building Aid Award and Ranking Information, that we shared that with Mr. Oblenis and posted on the Reimagining GMS website for the public to view. We received a response from Mr. Oblenis seeking, that he would seek to provide more info regarding that request. On January third, response from Andrew Cutter indicating that he has personally met with Mr. Oblenis, confirms request for building aid application response and the offer to share information from meetings and discussions held outside of the school board and SAU. January fourth, Anna Namorati sent a fifteen check manifest. January fourth, Holly Palzone sent updated job openings within the district, and that's all I have up till three o'clock today.
Excellent, thank you so much. Moving into general business, superintendent's report.
So I left on there the, the legal opinion, so it's just a placeholder under my report. Enrollment report is linked for the board in the month of December. We have three fewer students. The decline was totally at LMS, so it was one family that had moved out and then a second family accounted for the three. If you look at the Griffin numbers, you can see we're up one in pre-K, down one in kindergarten, and everything else is unremarkable across the data, so. And New Hampshire Presidential Primary, a reminder to the board that the primary will take place on Tuesday, January twenty-third. The high school is the pole- The high school is the polling place in town, uh, because it is a presidential primary that is, uh, hotly contested on one side with some, you know, fairly high emotions. Uh, we've worked with the high school admin to minimize student presence on that day. Um, so school will be in session at Griffin, and in session at the middle school. The plan at the high school is for, it coincides with the end of the semester perfectly, so we're gonna use a competency recovery model on Monday and Tuesday. Um, and so students will be attending if they need to recover competencies, as we've traditionally done. So there will be, um, you know, some students attending on that day, but there will not be a full school day there. And again, we'll make sure that our staff are, um, assigned to watch the area to make sure that nobody is coming across from the gym into the rest of the school. So that should remain locked and closed throughout the day. Um, and with minimal student traffic, it should be not a problem to have people parking in the back, and, um, you know, staff can park out front with the limited students that we will have that day. And then finally, I, I gave you a link to the job postings. I think it's really important that the board and the public just stay aware of what we are looking for relative to positions. Um, so Griffin, there are still thirteen open paraprofessional positions, plus a second shift custodian, and two lunch monitors. So if there's somebody who is in town during the day and looking for a nice, um, school-related position, there are several that exist at Griffin, the Q kids, please join us. Um, the middle school also has thirteen paraprofessional positions open, a second shift custodian, um, which is a part-time position, thirty hours a week, and then a second second shift custodian. At this time, we have Joe, our custodial supervisor, assigned to be at the middle school on second shift, um, in order to make sure that our, uh, our second shift custodian is not alone in the building. Um, we also need a food service tech, a lunch monitor, a grade six language arts teacher, um, and so that position has evolved now into an open, open position for somebody who's certified. Uh, so if there is somebody interested in joining us to teach, that would be great. We need a baseball coach and lacrosse, uh, coach. Those are coming in the spring, but we'd love to get somebody on board now. And at the high school, we have a second shift custodian position, uh, number one, two, and three. So there are three positions that are open at the high school. Paraprofessional, a spring track coach, a varsity baseball coach, a JV baseball coach, those are both assistants, by the way. There still is a science teacher opening, um, a food service tech, and an administrative assistant in our school counseling office. So, um, if somebody interested, those are still available. And then district-wide, there will be a superintendent opening in July, uh, speech-language pathologist and/or speech-language assistant, a grounds maintenance person to really start up in the spring when the grass starts to grow, and, um, substitutes in teaching, nurses, pares, custodians, food service, and there's no experience required. We'll let people pick their own hours. It's very flexible in terms of, uh, what we need there. So, please continue to promote and help us get these positions filled, because, um, we're in dire need for staffing. And that's what I have for you.
Thank you very much. Uh, business and operations, Mr. Totten, our first of the month update?
Yeah, nothing new. Uh, figured this was a lengthy agenda, so, uh, so the, uh, the transfers are just part of the fiscal year twenty-four school board, but I don't think there were really any new transfers as well, uh, but that was updated.
Great.
And the, that's the manifest?
Yeah, I've got my signatures.
Haven't gotten it to me yet.
Yeah, okay. So keep it moving. Um, any questions from the board for Mr. Totten?
Hi. Is the report linked?
There isn't.
Oh, right, it's the first one, okay.
Yeah. Right? There's no others?
There's not a link to report, that, the second meeting of the month.
Correct. Um, seeing no questions, moving into public minutes for December twenty-first, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the December twenty-first, uh, public session minutes. Is there a second?
A second.
First and a second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Obstain? Passes five zero zero. Sliding into new business, um, there are no policies, um, we did a lot of work at the end of last year. Obviously, focus right now is on warrant articles, budget, other things, but we will get back to having our policy meetings, and you will start seeing some more on the agenda shortly. Uh, moving into the collective bargaining agreement for the Litchfield Education Association. So the board is being asked to ratify the terms of the CBA, um, that was finalized with the help of a mediator on December eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Um, and so linked in the agenda is the tentative agreement, as well as the current ag, agreement. Um, and I'm gonna pass it over to you to, if you need to tee it up anymore, or?
Yep, no, I think you teed it up nicely. I mean, the parties met throughout the fall, and, um, we finally, uh, the board did declare impasse, and we sat down with a mediator all day on December eighteenth, and we were able to reach an agreement. And so that's the agreement that you have linked in the tentative agreement piece, um, at the board members' request. I also have given you the full agreement. Remember, those are always on our website.
Yeah.
Uh, so you can access them there. The cost estimates are what we are, um, what we're using in order to figure out how the warrant article is going to look. Um, and so basically, in year one, there are salary increases, including FICA and retirement of six-hundred-and-thirty-thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars. We also have increased co-curricular stipends by thirty-three thousand dollars. Um, we have new co-curricular and special assignments, specifically LMS curriculum facilitators. The goal there, because they have team leads, which work horizontally across the eighth grade and the seventh grade and so forth, um, the curriculum facilitators will work vertically to make sure that math, five, six, seven, eight, and ELA, five, six, seven, eight is aligned. And so that's really a critical position that, um, our principal has asked for, and and our curriculum director is looking for. Uh, we also have language where GMS teachers who are asked to cover lunch recess duty, um, because there's shortage of monitors, we will, we foresee the need to ask our teachers to step in periodically, and so they agreed to do that up to five times a year per teacher. So, um, when they step in, it's a twenty-five dollar payment that they will receive for sacrificing their lunch or their, um, their planning time. And so, you know, forty teachers times twenty-five bucks, five times a year is a five-thousand-dollar exposure. We probably won't use that, but that's how we have to estimate it out. And that brings year one to six-hundred-seventy-nine-thousand, seven-hundred-and-seven dollars. It is a two-year agreement, and so in year two, it is all about salary, the stuff that got resolved in year one is taken care of. Um, so then salaries plus FICA and retirement are six-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand, seven-hundred-and-nineteen dollars, bringing you the entire agreement and the cost of the entire agreement. After this was reached on, and just so everybody understands the timing of it, uh, so we reached the agreement, I don't know, eight-thirty-nine o'clock on Monday night, um, the LEA then noticed their members and had a meeting on Wednesday, the twentieth. Uh, their bylaws are they have to then wait a day for people to talk and contemplate, and then they voted on Friday, the twenty-second, and approved the agreement. Um, and so, once it's been ratified by the association, it comes forward to the board for ratification. And I think I've teed up enough, but Heidi and Tina and Doug were all part of this, so is there anything I missed that's key?
I wanted to mention, um, another, another, um, issue that we reached agreement on was the, um, the number of, uh, professional development days that we would be able to offer within a school year. Um, traditionally, we've had a one-hundred-and-eighty instructional days with six professional development days. We were able to negotiate that, um, we can still offer a hundred-and-eighty days, but if, if the hours work out to less, we can, um, use two of those days as professional development days, which gives us the ability to provide additional professional development that we haven't, and time for teachers to, um, fulfill their op, their, the, the state mandated, um, professional development, like the bloodborne pathogens, and, you know, all of those things that everybody has to, suicide prevention and bullying prevention, the things that everybody has to do every year. We're able to give them time to do that, um, um, and, and provide additional professional, professional development opportunities that will work, um, work out with, with consult, by consulting with the LEA. So, I think that's a, um, that's a big, that's a big plus for our district. I know our teachers have been looking for additional trainings and, and workshops to improve instruction, and, um, to be able to do that for them is, I think, a win on both sides.
Are there questions from the board?
No questions, just a comment, right? I think this is a very competitive agreement. Uh, I think it's, um, you know, I think it was, uh, a lot of hard work put into it. Uh, we'll leave it at that, but I, I appreciate everyone's efforts that have gone into it and the time commitment, quite frankly, the days off from work and all, all of that that went into this. Um, thank you to the LEA as well for, for coming to the table and negotiating, right? And, uh, I look forward to, to making the case to the voters on this particular warrant article.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments from the board? All right, hearing none, I guess, I don't, have we made a motion yet? I don't think we've made a motion yet, so I'll make, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to, um, to ratify the TA, the current TA for the, the collective bargaining agreement with the Litchfield Education Association.
Second.
First.
Heidi, to it. I thought she was.
You did. Yeah. I thirded, what do you think of that?
I'm ready to call the vote.
Yeah. Um, yeah, okay, I'll call it, yeah. All in favor of approving the TA agreement with the Litchfield Education Association, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Obstain? That passes and is ratified by us, I guess, that's the right word, right? We're being asked to ratify?
Ratify.
Um, five zero zero.
Master ratify, is that what you just said?
We're being asked to ratify, that's what the language says.
Master ratify.
No, no, not master, but hey, why not? That sounds like a good title.
We need a master agreement.
Yeah. All right, and take two, and this may, um, come as a bit of surprise for people to see this on our agenda, um, but this is a discussion about the collective bargaining agreement with the Litchfield Support Staff Association. And so, um, I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Dr. Jettie and Mr. Shoemaker, who was our board representative, um, in terms of how this came to be, why this came to be, and what the timing was, and what the agreement is.
Thank you. So at the, uh, meeting on the twenty-first, um, I shared with the board just the acute hiring situation that we're in. I purposely read all the open positions tonight, because we're not making this up. We, we don't have staff in our buildings. We're facing a pretty dire consequence of, uh, potentially losing a second shift custodian, um, and that would have resulted in shutting that building down. We would have said, no, we can't have the rec league playing basketball in a building that doesn't have staffing in it. Um, it would have been a pretty drastic impact that we would have had. And the board heard that, uh, and I appreciated that the board responded by saying, what can we do? Can we, can we negotiate something? Uh, we then reached out, and remember, that's Thursday night before vacation, just so everybody puts this in perspective. We reached out to, uh, the LSSA on Friday, had some productive conversations, set a meeting up over the break, um, and had a very preliminary, kind of ground rule session of, what are we looking to do here? You know, what, what's your interest, what's our interest, how can we, um, we agree what it is that we can sit down and then talk about? And so after we reached some decent ground rules, there was also, um, I, I think you probably disclosed it in correspondence, but there were several email communications about, uh, so what exactly are the parameters that the board is setting? Because if Matt is gonna be the representative of the board to the negotiations, he has to understand what guardrails you put up and what boundaries he has to work with, so. We then said.
I ask you to pause a second.
Of course.
So what is the current agreement time period? So the public understands?
Yeah, so the, it's, the current agreement is dated twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-five. So this agreement goes all the way through the end of next year. Um, and we were looking at salaries that just are not competitive. We've offered positions to people, and they chuckle and say, no thanks, and walk away. Um, the, the money is better at McDonald's and Dunkin' Donuts and other positions than it is working with us. Um, and so as much as we can say, but these are school time hours, and you get vacations off, and it's, you, you never will be asked to work a night shift or a weekend unless you're a custodian. Uh, you know, that just wasn't a selling point like it once was. Money is frankly talking right now, um, and so we needed to come up with a way to address that. So, um, so Matt, Doug, myself, and Holly sat down with the association yesterday and had a very, very, uh, productive conversation, uh, about what we could do and what our objectives were, and, um, we were able, able to hammer out a tentative agreement that you have in front of you. And we feel that this will bring our wages up to a far more competitive level. Um, it'll allow us the ability to attract people in and to retain people. Um, the key thing in here is that there is a retroactive payment that would be made to anybody back to January first, so back to the start of this, this calendar year, um, if the voters approve it. So this will have to go on the warrant, the voters will have to say, we approve these wage increases, this is appropriate, and it will be retro back to January first, using, um, using the wages that we're not paying to people. All those open positions that I listed are, is money that has been allocated and appropriated by the taxpayers and is not going into anybody's pocket at this point, because we don't have anybody in those slots. And by the way, the people who are now doing all the extra work and running around are working extra hard because of the, the lack of personnel. So, our intent is to take that, uh, cost avoidance in wages, not purposeful cost avoidance, but unplanned cost avoidance, to reward and recognize people so that we can keep them here in district, and hopefully then be able to offer positions to people, uh, down the road that will have them come to Litchfield and not choose other places over us.
So we'll hopefully be s, better staffed, and be a much better place for next school year.
So, to reiterate, the cost avoidance is for, for year, the current year only, right? And so that does, uh, some people may be wondering, that does have the consequence of we, we couldn't fill every open position, we, we don't think that we'll be able to. But obviously, one of the intentions of this is to be able to recruit more people, and we do, within that budget, still have the ability to fill some of these critical roles. So, I don't wanna, like, reiterate too much of what Mike said, but when we sat down and looked at the critical shortage, it is an emergency critical shortage. We are in a very, very bad place, and as a board, we've had this presented to us multiple times, where we, as a board, cannot figure out what to do to solve the problem. I mean, it, it almost feels like there's, there's just no workforce. Um, when we sat down at the table with this and looked at these numbers, it became very clear why that's the case. This was negotiated in two thousand twenty-two. Um, there was some disproportion, uh, i, in the way things were allocated, but also it was just painfully low. Um, we looked not only at, uh, our cohort, uh, of other schools that, you know, what they pay, we were drastically lower than everyone else. Um, but we also considered what other types of employment people in these roles could pursue, and there really just was no case for any sort of reason for people to come work at a school. Um, I can tell you that, I mean, just from the, uh, perspective of para, as which we have a massive shortage in, um, a food service representative said, I used to be a para, and I didn't wanna get kicked and bit anymore, so I, I went into food service. I mean, we're talking about something that is very, very hard to fill, and it's not, like, it's a, it's a walk-in-the-park job.
And it's a critical job.
And, and it's critical, correct. It's, it's drastically impacting our district right now. So, I think that what we have come to an agreement with, I am very appreciative of the, of the reps from the LSSA that came to the table, they were very, very reasonable and very, um, determined to find something to help us solve the problem, and I think that we achieved that.
And then if I may, I'm just gonna ask Doug to weigh in for a second, because when you're, you're using current money in the budget, um, and I, and he's the one who's watching the checkbook, right? So I, I kinda want his perspective on how the finances of all this come together, because, um, it's, it's important that the board understand that.
Well, then, one thing we can do is we can look back to last year's fund balance, uh, which started, uh, pretty high, and that was mainly due to not being able to fill positions. Nothing changed between this year and last year, other than the fact that we can't fill more positions. Uh, so we are expecting to have a healthy fund balance, uh, you know, due to positions, you, you know, with assistance in LSSAs, it, it's around six to seven-hundred thousand that, that is open. You bump up from, for some teachers, uh, positions as well from there, so, uh, there are, it, like any year, there's some added, added expenses, um, but they, they're a lot lower than what we will be saving in open positions. Um, you know, our goal is to be able to hire, um, that, that's why both contracts, you, you know, was an emphasis to make sure both contracts were ratified. Um, but, you know, as we look to hire support staff this year, hopefully we'll be able to bring some in, but it's always a lot harder to bring people in during a school year than kind of in-between school years as well. So, um, you know, while our, our goal is to hire as the year goes on, we are also realistic that that might not be able to be possible. Therefore, not only have the open positions been open now for a half year, a decent amount of them will be open for remainder of the year as well. Um, so, you know, we feel confident that the fund balance will be there. Um, so, you know, we feel confident that the fund balance will be there.
The, um, you, you, one, one thing that was, uh, mentioned, because we, we talked about, you know, retention rates. It was just disclosed that we almost lost a custodian, which we really actually cannot lose, or we will just have to shut the doors for, at, at night. Um, and one, one thing that this group brought forward was, I think knowing that more people might be coming will allow us to hang on. I mean, that's really where we're at. When we talk about these, this number of positions, I think a lot of people might go to the idea of, well, if you have this many positions and the schools are still functioning, how could you possibly need that many positions? It can't be that dire. It, it actually is that dire. Um, we're trying to solve those problems every single day. Um, and, and our, our administrators and staff are doing a phenomenal job, but they're, they're hanging on by a thread. So it, it's not a case of, uh, a lot of extra fluff. I mean, these are things that we have determined that are.
As a ripple effect. I mean, it's not just, you know, para, that then leads to the classroom, that then leads to, you know, the office. It leads to, like you said, administrators who are performing and, and serving in a paraprofessional role.
Or a lunch monitor.
Or a lunch monitor role or recess monitor role because they have to, because they have those numbers. So I think the board understands, and I, I don't want to presume to speak for everyone, but certainly agrees that this has become a dire circumstance that we had to act.
Yeah, I mean, in fact, the fact of the matter is, and to be very candid, this board talked about whether we could open schools or not. Right? Whether we had the staff to clean the buildings to be able to open the schools. We have salaries in our current agreement that start in the $12 range, just to put that in perspective, right? I mean, we have to do better as a town. We have to, we have to bridge this gap. We understand that this is a one-year agreement for salaries because this contract is up for full negotiation next year. But this is a way for us to keep the staff and to quite frankly, pay the staff that are doing the job and they deserve it. And I think it's also a responsible way to use, uh, to use monies within our operating budget to retro- retroactively pay these individuals who are working their butts off.
Here, here.
All right. So is there a motion? Matt, do you want to be the, to be honest?
I will make the motion to, uh, uh, ratify the TA with the LSSA.
Second.
You were just waiting to pass.
I was close.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of, uh, approving and ratifying the collective bargaining agreement, um, TA with the Litchfield Support Staff Association, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? This passes, five zero zero.
Madam Chairman, just for a point of motion, uh, the Budget Committee will need both of these documents relatively quickly. Would you like me to send them or would you like to send them?
Yeah, I mean, they're on a public agenda, so.
Agenda right now.
Great. Okay, so they're good to go?
Yep, perfect. Good to go.
Okay, um, that completes our new business. Um, now we slide into old business. Thankfully, this will be short. Um, for an update to the superintendent search process, we haven't met since the last time. Um, we reviewed the survey results. We are meeting on Tuesday, uh, the ninth, is that the correct date? Tuesday, the ninth, and then we have full days on the 18th and the 24th. So we have our work cut out for us, but we're, we're ready to rock and roll on that. The good news is, I just peeked at the, um, application file and it looks like there's about a dozen in there right now. So there will be options. Um, so that's the update on the superintendent search process.
When will the board start to see some resumes and some calls for these individuals?
So we only have access to the folder, but what we're doing on Tuesday is having that preliminary review and narrowing down the candidates that we want to have for that first interview. Um, that will be at the school, the decision, um, from the New Hampshire School Board Association and the person, Michelle, leading the search, Michelle Munson, is to have those people travel to be and see the school and see what, see the district and see where they would be working. Um, and then other interviews can be conducted, uh, remotely. But, uh, we'll have a better idea of how many candidates we're going to have that first interview with after Tuesday's meeting. And then at that point, I think, um, the board is certainly welcome to, to pop in and view different things as we go along.
So when you make the first cut, we'll have access to that first cut of resumes?
The ones that are cut, probably.
The, the ones that are made the cut.
Moving forward, probably. Yes, yes. I mean, again, this is a process where, right now, the candidates and their names are confidential and it is part of that com- and it is in, in dire. It is important. We keep those names confidential for anyone who is applying. Um, but go on, the board will do so. Um, I trust the board to do that. And so, yeah, right. Whenever anyone wants access, I'm happy to share on the board. Not anyone. Um, all right, jumping into the new elementary school. Um, we still have all of the materials on here from the Facility Improvement Committee, I think so that we can reference it if we, we wanted to reference anything. Um, I think this is the part where the board can engage in some further discussion on, uh, some of the comments and recent developments that have happened in the last 30 days or so, and what steps, if any, the board wants to take to proceed, um, to not proceed, to give further direction. You know, what the board is looking to do.
So I, I guess I'll open this up.
Yeah.
Yeah, would you like me to?
Sure.
Okay, all right. So, uh, I, I'd like to personally thank Mr. Oblynas for not only his time this weekend, as mentioned to the board, uh, we had met and just I, my position was I wanted to understand where Mr. Oblynas was coming from, understand the numbers, just like this board is trying to understand, because I know we have likely a vote tonight, right? And I really wanted to understand and do my due diligence to understand the facts. That being said, I do think Mr. Oblynas certainly puts up a compelling, uh, a compelling scenario to this board about renovation costs. I still question the, the numbers, right, and how real those numbers are, but that's not for me to decide. This board is using the information at hand to make the best decisions possible, right? We're relying upon the experts that we have paid in this space to help educate us. I do think that there is significant and immediate value in having Mr. Oblynas join the Facilities Improvement Committee and be a member of that board, which is why I moved that to the agenda for this evening to talk about that. We can talk about that at that point. Um, but most certainly, I think, uh, we need Kyle's help to be able to address and to work with Mr. Oblynas and to understand what costs are real, what costs are not real. I can say, tonight we heard about an elevator as an example. Well, there's no elevator budget in, in any of these proposals, right? So that's a cost that we didn't think about. We didn't think about renovating the 1930s building. That's not in any of Kyle's work, right? So there's.
Well, we don't know what is in Kyle's work, and I think that's, that's.
But that wasn't specifically called out, right? There was no call out that we're going to renovate the 1930s building, right? In any of the renovation numbers that I've seen. But yet, we're hearing that as a potential option tonight. So in any event, I do think further due diligence is necessary. Um, and what I'd like to understand, I don't even know if this is possible, but what I'd like to understand is, would we jeopardize state building aid and would we jeopardize anything to do with the bond if we were even to consider moving the warrant article into a special meeting scenario? Can we even do that? I don't know. Can we say, hey, we have some new information? And again, we're trying to make the best decisions possible. We want to get this right. We need to get this right, right? Can we delay this two, three months while we perform additional due diligence to make the right decision? Now, I know special elections in the eyes of the voters and, you know, all, all of that absolutely in play in, in my mind too, so. Just throwing it out there.
So, haven't even thought about that. Would need time to think about it. I, I would encourage us, I think, to recognize that we have time to get the warrant finalized. And so that's a question that we can dig into and try to get an answer to. I think there's a political component, as you said. People dislike it. Um, I think having an annual meeting after daylight savings time changes and people want to be outside watching their kids run around, uh, and be on the bike path and that sort of stuff, you get into problematic territory politically. That's not that you can't do it, it's just, is that the right thing to do? So have to ponder all that. Uh, you are also talking, uh, because we are a, um, a ballot voting town, so we're talking about a day at the polls someday, um, in order to do, to do that. Um, I would suggest that, uh, another possible thing, so Doug and I had a meeting today with the folks at the state uh, to just talk about exactly what building aid is and to try to make sure that we understand the numbers, what it's linked to, et cetera. Um, and so we can spend a few minutes now, if it, if it's helpful, sort of debriefing that conversation. So, um, what we've learned is that the way building aid is currently set up, um, it's a little bit difficult to try to figure out what number to use for building aid. We know that we have a maximum award of seven million, what's the exact amount, seven?
So, 7,090,164 dollars.
That's the maximum. And that is if our building is designed the way, uh, we laid it out, um, and everything is maximized in order to take full advantage of it. That's the amount that we would qualify for. Um, but you get 80% of that upfront, which is a $5.8 million number. Um, and then after the project is done and the state analyzes, did we build what we said we were going to build? Did we achieve every objective? And if the answer is yes, you then will get the, the 20% that brings you up to that maximum amount. So it makes it tricky for us to estimate exactly how much building aid there will be. And you'll see in, in a second when we start to talk about the warrant article, what's the right number to put on there. Districts have gotten into a lot of trouble by using the maximum amount in the warrant. Uh, because if you don't get that money, you then have to find that money in your budget in order to do this. And so that's, that's a problem that, um, we worked closely with Gordon this afternoon on how to word this correctly. He's actually been, um, uh, working closely with the Department of Ed to make sure that future districts like us do not get into trouble by using language that isn't clear in terms of what we can do. And so we'll have some language recommendations on that. Just coming back to the building aid, uh, for a second. Um, it, so we're in no man's land and I want to paint the picture of what I mean by that. We are, we applied under a set of rules that are now being changed. So there are draft rules in the ED 321s that are going to be going forward. It's unclear on whether the draft is going to be adopted as written or will there be further changes done? So, you know, it's sort of like, we have qualified under the rules that we understood. There are now new rules that are coming and nobody knows what's going to happen with the rules. The second thing that is no man's land is the funding. We currently have an allocation from the legislature in this biennium with a high degree of probability that we will qualify for the 7 million or up to the 7 million. The money will be there to fund it. And I say high probability because we're District Number Five. There are two districts that are above us. Uh, one district has struggled to get a project launched and supported by their community. Another district has said, the amount of money left for us isn't enough, so we're just going to decline it and wait for the next biennium. I'll come back to that one in a second. But, so it looks like there is a strong chance that we would qualify for the $7 million now if our project was approved and supported by the voters. Um, if we, if we decline that and say, let's take our chances in the future, you then come into the legislature that hasn't even been elected yet. They're going to be elected in next November during a hotly contested federal election that's going to have passions all over the place. I'm only painting that political picture because you don't know what the next legislature is going to be. Are they going to feel that there's not enough money for building aid and that they want to find ways to increase that? Or are they going to feel that, you know what, that's a local control problem, we're going to tap out and put nothing into building aid like had been done years ago? So this idea that there could be more money in the future or there could be no money in the future is the gamble, it's the crystal ball. We have to think about that, um, because we don't know what will come of that down the road.
I think another unknown is adequacy aid, um, which was, you know, again, um, said that the state court ruled that the state is not supplying the, the, or, you know, the recommended or what would be adequate for students' education. Um, so, you know, we don't know if that's going to change what the state does, but if the state does have extra money, you know, or plan on having extra money, it might make more sense for them to put it more towards adequacy aid, which they've done in the past, than towards the building projects as well. Knowing that a court has said you're not near where you should be as well. So it might be a way to, to bump up as well. So there's just, there's a lot of unknowns when it comes with funding in the state.
Another piece that I want to just talk about for a second with building aid, and, and we've covered this multiple times. So I just, I, I just want to remind the board, uh, we applied to the state and said, our school has problems. And we articulated what those problems are. We have high moisture in the school. We have a proximity to 3A that creates safety concerns. We received the maximum reward of a points based up on that, uh, you know, so forth. So the, I don't have to review, we do the full list, but there's a lot of concerns relative to the current Griffin. If we build new, the only way we get the maximum amount is if we resolve every, every single issue we identified. So the, the building aid is tied to fixing all the problems that were, um, identified as part of that application process. If we were to renovate the building, um, then we have to solve all those problems also, right? So, um, you know, we have to solve the moisture problem by renovating. We have to solve, uh, safety concerns relative to 3A through renovation. Um, and I think that's just important to be mindful of, that we can't say, well, we couldn't, we couldn't resolve issues relative to 3A. We're going to have to do something there. Um, and I hope the board appreciates too, that Doug and I met with Mr. Oblynas on the Friday before break for a couple of hours also, um, and made sure that we understood the questions and concerns, um, that were being posed. And, um, so, you know, we are trying to understand, like, the renovation component and what that would look like. And, um, you know, we took exception, I'll be honest, we took exception to the idea of fencing in the school. I said, I, I, I'm not sure the community is ready. I think we'd have to really weigh this out. You know, you drive down 3A, you've got the beautiful historic district, you come around the corner, and we now have a fence around a school. Um, I, I don't know how we're resolving the driveway access and fencing in. You know, there's just questions I have and I'm like, and is that really what the community of Litchfield wants, um, as you come around that bend? Don't know. It's something we would have to, but we have to solve the problem and make sure that, um, you know, a student can't dash 40 feet and end up in the middle of a highway. So we, we had those, those conversations.
So what I'm, what I'm struggling with is how, how deep of a dive do we take? Because I think in, in some regards, and, you know, Mr. Oblynas, I really appreciate the work that you're doing. There's a couple things in your letter that I wish we could move away from because there's a, a few assertions that I feel like I personally have addressed multiple times that keep coming up. Like the example, it, it keeps being brought up that the current site was completely not suitable for, for constru- for construction. That really was not the perspective. I, I've said it before, I'll say it again. The building on a different site was a more suitable option. We were, at the time, tasked with identifying what the best option would be. That has changed because there's a lack of available land, right? So, so we have to look at that. If it was not suitable to build on that site, then we wouldn't be pursuing this option, uh, whether it be renovations or, or building on the site. So I, I, you know, would just like to address that. But other than that, I think you bring a lot of interesting points that I really am, am interested in talking about. My, my question is, uh, you know, we are, my, my statement is that we, it's not that we have not evaluated renovations at all. And I, I want to clarify that because I keep feeling like there's like this, this indication that we haven't even considered renovating. Like this is like the first time that we've ever heard it. Um, the, what we're diving into more is how deep do we have to have the architects go into the analysis of renovating to, to really do the due diligence on that? And I'm, I'm still not 100% clear on that myself. I mean, Andrew, you had a lengthy, you know, conversation with Mr. Oblynas, so maybe you have a different feel on that. But my thought, my thought process is, you know, as we started to discuss, and I know that the Facilities Committee is probably a better place for it, which I personally would, would love to have your participation in. Um, so, so, you know, maybe we'll reserve some of those things. But there are some things on the, on your, your proposal that I can see some potential issues with that our architect has already raised, which have sort of driven us to that idea of, by the time we do all of these things, I, I don't think that the, you know, 15 million is even close to a number for us to achieve what we're trying to achieve with the actual education standards. And I, I would like to go back to Kyle and ask him.
So I, I noticed tonight, within the, the items, the documents that are linked under this part of the agenda, one of them is item number four, which it says renovations and new construction. Um, there is a document there, um, that outlines the projected costs, um, by Barker and Associates. Um, and, you know, just a preliminary look through, the, the total at the bottom is at 37,270,000. Um, so it's on the agenda. I don't, I don't know if that's to the level of detail, but it shows at least that Kyle has considered this option and looked into with Bonnet Page and Stone, I'm assuming. Um, you know, the, the, the potential costs that weren't included in that 15 million. you know, the, the, the potential costs that weren't included in that fifteen million that were in the original feasibility study. So, and I wanted to reiterate too, it was never that renovation wasn't feasible. It was, can we achieve the same goals that we want to achieve with a new building at a cost savings that makes a big difference for the taxpayer? And, you know, just glancing over this, Kyle's analysis, it looks like it would, you know, we're not that far off from building new, which is what I said earlier, what I mentioned early about exceeding the sixty percent threshold where we should be considering a replacement. But I think this is a great starting point for discussions with Kyle. You know, if we, if we share Mr. Oblenas' documents and, and, you know, his proposals with Kyle, have, have him go through it and make, do a comparison, I think that is a good, a good place to start with the facilities committee.
Agree, I'm doing a sanity check on all this, just mentally, right? And I, obviously this board knows what we just went through with the middle school. And that was really just addressing HVAC. Right?
And, and energy efficiency.
And energy efficiency, right? We're not talking fire suppression, we're not talking new classrooms.
Electrical.
Electrical, we're not talking any of that. Right, and that, and that middle school cost was, I'm going to say, I don't know the exact number, seven million dollars, right? All in, significant. So I don't, I don't know realistically how we could also address all of the issues at Griffin for eighteen, twenty, we'll call it twenty million, right? And, and, and really have a school that's going to set us up for success for the next one hundred years. But I'm not the expert, that's why I really need to, I really need to balance all of the research and all the hard work Mr. Oblenas is doing with what our architect is saying, and let's come to a consensus.
And so that, I think, is where the question is right now, which is, what's the, what are we directing out of him? Because, I mean, there's been instances where I'm maybe misinterpreting, but in, in, understanding that there should be a full, full-scale renovation design done. I mean, that's very costly, right? So some of what we've relied on is having lengthy conversations throughout the facilities committee meetings and the project, the separate project meetings that we're having, where, where the architect is going through some of these things and saying, here's all the reasons why that's not ultimately going to make sense. Listen, I, I'll be the first to acknowledge that you, you have to make sacrifices in some places. I mean, we've, we've cut by ten thousand square feet, right? Like, it, it started with this, like, these beautiful open spaces that were going to be wonderful for educational program, which, by the way, in a perfect world, probably would be wonderful for educational programming. But you, you have to make sacrifices. If, if the answer was, we can achieve everything, which is what Kyle's not telling us we can do, and you have to put a fence around the school, I understand the, I, I understand the optics of it. I don't love the idea of having a fence around the school, but I could recommend saying, okay, for fifteen million dollars, if we're saving thirty million dollars, okay.
Make it a pretty fence.
Yeah, like, that, that's okay, like, I, I'm not, I'm not unrealistic with respect to those things. I think that, you know, we've had Kyle try to go back and boil down the numbers. We're not talking about fifteen million versus forty-four million. We are talking numbers that are much closer when we actually start to look at what we have to do. So I guess the question just becomes, what's the?
In my understanding, based upon all the work that Kyle's already done on this, is what we're, for a renovation of GMS to the scale that we're talking about, right? Would be somewhere in the ballpark of thirty seven million dollars.
That's my understanding, viewing this document, that's my understanding.
And so when I look at the cost of the new building and what we're going to talk about in a warrant article, being somewhere in the forty-four million dollar range and change, and then considering state aid, maybe the renovation would also consider state aid, to be determined.
To answer the question, as long as you resolve every problem that was.
Right, but I don't know that I'm going to resolve the proximity to three A.
That's, that's the one that, I don't know that a fence resolves that problem. You know, a car that goes off three A and slams into the building is going to go right through a fence, so.
Well, unless we refer to, as a part of the renovation, to what Mr. Oblenas said, where you demolish that part of the building that's closest to three A and you build elsewhere.
But he's, but he's still, but he's still connecting, and he's still connecting to the thirties building.
The cafeteria is still right there.
So we, we asked the state today, is it all or nothing, or is it partial? And they said it's, it's all or nothing. If you don't meet all of the, what you claimed as deficiencies, you get zero state aid. Because they said, remember, you got ranked on your deficiencies. So if you're not meeting all the deficiencies, you shouldn't have been ranked number five. You should have been ranked lower down.
The, the other deficiency, the other deficiency aside from proximity to three A is the moisture deficiency, which again, you know, I have asked Kyle specifically because there's no, it's no secret that that site does have water on it. I absolutely was not going to put my name behind recommending building on that site if they did not feel as though they could adequately design to accommodate for the fact that it is a wetter site. And they said, with new construction, we can, we can build appropriately to solve those problems. There's going to be, there would be components of obviously like water.
Site work.
Site work, but also buildings, building this up.
So that's what we need to understand with Mr. Oblenas and our architect, right? Is what are we not going to be able to achieve with a renovation that would impact state aid funding?
I, I think the, the safety question is a judgment call. So we can make every case we want about how we resolve that, but it's going to be up to the state to come in and say, we disagree with you, or we agree with you.
And we won't know that.
And we won't know that until we're done, and that's just the reality of it, right? And then in terms of the moisture piece, you know, you can resolve the moisture piece. There was a plan, there was a multimillion dollar plan that would have involved drainage and work done on that building that was never approved.
A very robust HVAC system.
And a highly robust HVAC system that then has ongoing operating costs that will come to bear down the road. And so life cycle, that's where you end up with that life cycle, I, I think, with the thirty seven million is because you have operating costs that are going to cost you in order to maintain it.
This is not operating costs, the document I'm looking at, this is the project itself. So this is, it's on the agenda.
Yep.
Kayla must have linked it, but it's add reno project cost PDF that's linked on the agenda. But the operating costs, the life cycle operating costs make a difference as well.
I, I think it is completely reasonable for the board to ask us to reengage with Kyle. And, you know, we have a couple of ways to do that. We have our progress meetings that occur, so we certainly can lay this out and ask to put something to it. I mean, I, I can do armchair quarterback numbers on it. You're adding fourteen classrooms plus special ed space, thousand square foot of classroom, hallways, et cetera. You're looking at about twenty thousand square feet when this is all said and done. At four hundred and twenty-five dollars a square foot, eight and a half million dollars right here in this box. Pretty easy to estimate that out. Kyle can confirm that for me. You know, if you do that here, you're looking at another eight and a half million, so you're at seventeen just with these two additions, I think. And then you have to renovate and do the rest of this work, you have to do the site work, put the road in, et cetera. I think you're easily coming into, you know, mid, mid twenties in order to come at that, and then it's really what level of renovation are you looking at? I, I think this might actually be higher because the needs in here are far greater than, this isn't paint.
Knocking down walls and.
No, it's all your HVAC, again, it's all, all electrical, it's all fire.
To make those classes bigger, you have to move walls.
Yep.
You have to move those walls.
And then the other thing that Kyle did indicate was that even to, for the existing portions of the building, even to try to get any sort of level of efficiency out of them, we're going to be basically building on the outside of those. So I, I guess, what, I, I would very much like to be able to get a, a, a more suitable answer for Mr. Oblenas. I, I would like to do that, because I do think that he's spent a lot of time presenting these options. I think that he represents a portion of the community that, that genuinely wants to know about this, which I want to provide those answers. I feel, I feel comfortable, but I'm on the facilities committee, and I've been participating in this to a high level for a very long time. I feel comfortable with the information that I've gotten from Kyle. But it is my duty as a school board member to help everyone else feel comfortable by providing enough information, so.
And I think this is.
The question is, what does that have to be?
Right, and I think Mr. Oblenas is right. If, if this is a question mark, you know, is it really possible, did we really, you know, did we really consider what was under every single rock? Then, you know, that, that will cost us votes. So, I mean, I, I definitely want to go forward with a project that our, our voters, our constituents, our students, our staff, everybody is confident that that is the best scenario and that is the best option moving forward.
So if, if the board wants to direct us, because it's going to cost money for Kyle to do this, right? But if you want to direct us to reengage Kyle around that and getting some numbers, I think we have time to do that, and I propose the following. I can talk with Kyle as quickly as tomorrow. I could meet with Kyle on Friday to go through a little bit more detail. I'm actually in Concord at a meeting in the morning, Kyle's office is in Concord, I'm sure we can get together. Just to make sure we have this, we've got a facility, a progress monitoring meeting on Monday, the eighth, where we can get some preliminary numbers, and a facilities improvement committee meeting on the tenth.
Where we can discuss the findings. I think we, I think Kyle, because of this document that I'm seeing.
He's not starting from scratch.
Right, right. I think he can, I think we can do it within the time, the timeframe before the next facilities meeting and get it.
So I want to give Peter a chance to weigh in, you and I have stayed quiet so far, so I want to.
I, I think it's a good idea, and I think if you let Mr. Oblenas join the facilities committee, he's the one who's asking all the really good questions. If we can get him the answers that he needs, I think that would go a long way in.
And either way, right, this facilities committee continues. It doesn't, it doesn't stop with a warrant article or a vote, right? It's going to be instrumental to helping the old, if this passes, right? It's going to be instrumental to helping guide decisions that are made in whatever the future state is.
Can I just point out, we've been begging for a member of the community to join us. This is not, I, I, I'm glad that somebody's come along, but it's not like we've.
It would have been stellar if you came like nine months ago.
Two years ago would have been awesome.
Yes.
And, and, and I, you know, I just, I just want to vocalize, I, I have really, you know, struggled with this, this project. You know, it's something that I think everyone knows that we need to, to solve the problem. The, the most, the, the latest pressure for me is this state aid. I think it's very tentative whether or not it would be there next year. And so like, we as a board also don't want to be the people that say, okay, we're not going to, we're not going to give you this option. And then this, if the state aid goes away, then it's like, what, what's wrong with you idiots? You didn't, you, you passed up seven million dollars, right? Like, we, we are constantly faced with these things that are not easy decisions. I, I think sometimes it gets oversimplified from what I see in the public forums. Right, it's, it's not easy to sit up here and try to come up with the right answers. So I do appreciate that, hopefully we can get some.
What type of costs do you think for Kyle? I mean, up to five thousand dollars, like, what are we talking about that he would need to be able to pull together?
I, I don't want to estimate it for Kyle. My, my gut is he's been very reasonable with us, and he has a lot of the work done. And honestly, my, my napkin math is.
But I just want to.
He'll engage at, at, but.
But we need to authorize something, right?
If you authorize us, we're going to be well under five thousand would be my estimate.
But can I just, can I just make a statement real quick? Again, I want to reiterate this point. I don't know that we, I'm not clear on what we're authorized. Like, I don't know what Mike is going to go get. And so I, you know, we're going to have another public input in a few minutes. I just want to go out there saying, I, I am not in favor of doing a full plan for, for renovation. I, I think we'd be talking tens of thousands of dollars. So I guess what my question will be is, what, what level of information short of doing a full plan would be satisfactory? Because we've tried to, you know, have Kyle participate in some of the meetings and answer some questions. So I just want to know what that needs to look like.
What I, what I intend to ask for is for him to revisit all of the documents that he's already provided us relative to renovation, to update his numbers to current market prices, you know, where we are today, to share Mr. Oblenas' thoughts, and to do cost estimates on doing something like this. And again, you know, we've paid Kyle to hone in on the four twenty-five a square foot. I'm, I'm saying twenty here, he might say, oh, that's really eighteen, and it's only this amount.
In this projection, he, he has new construction at four twenty-five a square foot, renovation at three hundred a square foot, so.
But he's been clear that that three hundred a square foot, as soon as you unearth a new problem, you.
And that's the other thing.
There's a, there's an element of mystery to any renovation.
It's highly variable about what you mean with that. He, so he has said to us, it could be a hundred dollars a square foot, if, depending upon the type of renovation that you're doing. In, in this case, it's, it's a pretty detailed renovation. So he's using three hundred because it's going to be way more. HVAC systems, repiping stuff, electrical, I mean, you've got to remember, these classrooms have like one outlet in them. And we need to do an update on all of that. The whole master control panel, remember, the switch is blue, we've got it updated.
Like Andrew said, LMS was a small project.
So what I, what I will say, you know, again, to reiterate this point, the reason why I trust Kyle is, he's done a large number of projects, both renovation and new construction. I do not believe that he is, has any financial or other incentive to drive us towards one option or the other.
So can I, can I just, in response to that, so I'm going to point something out. In fairness, Kyle gets a percentage of the cost of the project, right? So if we spend twenty million, he does not make as much money as if we spend forty. And I'm just going to say that out loud. That's the reality of it, and there will be people in the community who will say, well, yeah, he's driving us toward the more expensive project because there will be a greater percent, right? Having said that, I've also sat in meetings with this man for the last, I don't know, three years, I think. And I don't get a whiff of this being a profit-driven thing, because, you know, he's going to put his soul and heart into developing something for us. But if he's not doing it in Litchfield, he's going to get another project.
Well, I get, that was my point, my point is that he's not hard up for work, he does a lot of these projects. I, I just wanted to state out loud that there, I, I do not feel like we are being sold on something that's for, for his financial benefit. With that said, if, if he comes back and says, oh, you know what, looking at this, I, I can do a fifteen, we can get you all of those things, and we can, you know, solve those issues to the point that I feel very confident that you are going to be able to qualify for that state aid, then I am in favor of looking at this. I, I'm not closed off to this. I just, the information that I've been provided thus far does not suggest that that's going to be the case. But I'm glad that we're asking the question.
My concern is timeline, sorry.
Sorry, the other question I have is timeline of a renovation.
Right, oh.
No, no, timeline of an actual renovation. Because if we're talking about a two-year project from, for new construction that's going to be in the back, away from the school in progress, and they're able to be in and out with, I'm not going to say even then, it would be minimal disruption, there's still going to be disruption. What is a multi-phase build here, then take down here, then come over here, and then expand this? What is a, what is an accurate timeline for that? Because if it's a four to five-year project, I have concerns about that.
Can you also task Mr. Mitchell with taking a look at his physical resources and just, in helping us understand what he would need to do? I think he, he had mentioned to me at one point that he'd be willing to do that, take a look and see what, what sort of, you know, outplacement. Because even just like looking at Mr. Oblenas' plan, moving the, moving the staff, the, the office staff out of the building is not an option in an elementary school during, during school, right? So there, there are challenges, which again, not, you know, make sure you have solutions to that too. But there, you know, there are things that we're not fully understanding with that.
I think Kyle will be able to help you with Mr. Oblenas' plan to say, you know, it doesn't, it's not this order, it should be this order. I mean, he's, he's done that before, so.
Yeah, and, and I think the other piece is to phase that out. Like, so, you know, we learned, I mean, remember, LMS was a summer slam project that turned into an ongoing year-long project, right?
And Jen, I mean, Jen has been very honest about the impact that it's had on her staff and her students.
And the education of the students that year.
It suffered.
Yep.
Test scores went down, kids' achievement went down.
In any event, I think the initial thoughts of the staging and the layout was helpful.
Absolutely.
Oh, absolutely.
Right, to understand kind of the approach and the philosophy for how this could be undertaken.
I'm saying student and staff, like, school impact has to be a consideration.
So, so timeline, to answer Andrew's question, I think it depends on what we're asking him to, to provide.
I mean, we have a warrant article vote tonight, pretty sure, right? So like, that, that's where my head's at, like, what?
But it doesn't have to be finalized till the end of January.
You don't have to vote tonight, you could, you could wait until your next meeting on the seventeenth.
I don't want to do that, but we could vote tonight and then replace it with.
Aren't we meeting on the eleventh?
Project instead, if we decide to go in that direction.
It's a bond meeting, and there's a something else, I mean.
We did not post for the board to meet, the, the warrant article is posted on the bulletin board outside. And you have a copy of it, but you have the bond meeting followed by the budget hearing.
I'm just wondering if that could be a vote.
Budget committee is meeting afterward.
That's after the facilities meeting, hopefully we have those numbers by then, and that could be the day that we.
The flip side is, we can post that you're going to meet that night too. That's not a problem, we just have to get the notice up, so it's not posted yet.
I believe.
That sounds like an awesome night. School board meeting, budget meeting.
Listen, if we get out before eleven, it's not, it's not a full day's work.
It's a bonus, who are you talking to?
But I think also, I mean, this, the renovation option would be contingent on building aid as well, right? building aid as well, right? So, we're still.
Well, if, if it's twenty million dollars as opposed to thirty-four million dollars, we'd love to have the seven million, but it's still less than we would pay.
Yeah.
The taxpayers would pay for the.
It won't, it won't be.
It won't be twenty million.
We can do it. So, you, you really are saying seven million less than the thirty-seven, thirty-six is the amount, so.
It'd be thirty.
You, you know, you would have to, it's the gap between twenty-nine is the seven million dollars. So, if this exceeds twenty-nine, then.
Okay, so trying to summarize this, I, because I think Matt's correct in pointing out, and we did it over break, we need to have very clear parameters, we need to be very clear in what we are asking Kyle to do and what we are looking for and information we need to be able to have that vote and make that decision. And so, again, I, if, do you think that timeline you just discussed with numbers being presented at the facility improvement committee on the tenth, and if we all watch that and/or either attend and sit in the back, but not have it be a meeting, but.
Can Kyle come to that meeting?
Uh, I, I have to check with him.
Yeah. Because that would be a great meeting for Kyle to be, if he can, right? As well as Mr. Oblenis.
Right.
And hash it out.
Well, I mean, and, so, this is, I have tried to let the board talk, but I'm going to point out a couple of concerns I have just quickly, which is, we've discussed a consolidation option in June. We asked the town to come forward with any other ideas that should be investigated at that time. We authorized Kyle, and I think we came up with an additional five options that we had Kyle investigate. And so, in terms of timing and where this is in proximity to the warrant article, I'm not blaming anyone, I'm certainly, again, I appreciate the research and the concern, but I am frustrated with the timing. This is, to me, this is the time of the project where if we are behind it as a board, we should be marketing, we should be doing public relations, we should be having community forums, we should be going door-to-door, we should be canvassing, or not we, but somebody should be. This is the time that we need to get the town on board, and if we're still saying we're not even sure this is the right plan, we are sending a really bad message.
I don't think we're saying that. I think we're saying we're looking at all options.
I don't, I don't feel like we're saying that. I, so, I share your frustrations because we have done a lot more work than people realize. Uh, and I, it's impossible to have people understand the full depths of how much we've actually done to, in the background.
I'm just looking at the calendar. It's January third.
With, with that said.
Percent lead in the game.
With that said, where we currently stand, and Mr. Oblenis actually acknowledges, we have to do something to solve the problem.
Absolutely.
Where we currently, as far as I'm concerned, where we stand is, we either build a new school on that site, or we renovate. There, there's really no, we're, there are no other available options at this point. Mr. Oblenis has presented quite a bit of information, both to us and in the public forums, that have raised a question that I think is being echoed by other people in the public forums, that I would like to be able to present them with this information, not because I don't stand behind the project, because I want to be able to empower them to feel confident in coming out to vote.
I completely agree with that. And again, I am in favor of going back and having this research done. I want to publicly comment and say, I am concerned that we need to get going and making a decision on this, and it's felt like.
I think we need to have a decision.
Just for the record, my decisions to, my decision for tonight is to move the warrant article forward until we have better information available.
Better information. That's, that's how I'm feeling as well.
We have to use the best information at hand. We don't know any better at this point.
That's how I'm feeling as well. Um, I, I completely agree with that. Again, I want to make sure Mr. Oblenis's questions are answered because they're good ones, and they're good points, and I think they need to all be considered.
And they're all going to come back up again and deliberate, make no mistake about it.
Absolutely.
Right?
Absol-, and it should. It absolutely should. This is an expensive project and people absolutely should be asking the questions. I have zero issue with it. I struggle with the timing just because of where, the date that it is and where we are. I think that also stems a little bit from the frustration of losing the land and that whole piece too, just because it feels like there's just been different, you know, obstacles that we've had to overcome. But in terms of, we're going to move forward, I want to work collaborative, collaboratively as a board, collaboratively as a town, I want to make sure the questions are answered. I believe Mr. Oblenis has met with Doug and Mike, I believe he's talked with Kyle, at least after a facilities improvement meeting in the hallway at one point. I would love to make sure that he is, at the very least, at the end of the day, he can say, I got the time I needed to present my concerns, and I may not have agreed with the answers that came out, but I had the time to present my concerns. And so, I'm fully in favor of him joining facility improvement. I'm fully in favor of making sure that we have a timeline for what Kyle needs to come forward with, which is his review and analysis of a, of an accurate renovation cost number. Is that what the board agrees is, is Kyle's marching order?
Yes.
Can I direct? So, one of the things that Mr. Oblenis brought up too was, he was basing a lot of his numbers off of Kyle's needs assessment, and on the, almost the back page is how Kyle broke down what would be a renovation at the elementary school. Now, these aren't current numbers, so I think that's what we're asking.
Right, that's what we're asking.
If this is how we're asking him to project it, and then I think we have something very clear as far as what we want Kyle to do, we want Kyle to update his own numbers as far as a renovation.
But again, I also want numbers for if, if now renovation of the thirties building's in scope, that needs to be included. If we're going to add an elevator, that needs to be included, right?
See, I think that is, I think, based on the document that's in our agenda, that is his projection analysis, and that's just to, I mean, I, I think we should have him outline what's included in that cost.
I have never assumed that the thirties building was going to be part of that.
Me neither, but, like.
I, I assume it will not be unless it's a renovation because it's connected. That's where I see the difference being, whereas if it's a different project on a different site, the thirties building is a separate conversation.
I agree. I don't think the thirties building is included in Kyle's thirty-seven million.
But I think, I think we want to ask him about that.
Yes.
So, we can say, you know, because what's being proposed here is a two-story addition so that there is an elevator to solve the handicap accessibility issues. You know, if you resolve that with an elevator in this part of the building, and then you can renovate this into, and the question becomes into what?
To what?
Into classrooms or whatever.
Just to project forward, now, obviously, this is not a public comment section where Mr. Oblenis just has to sit there and hear all the things we're saying about his.
Remove it into public domain here in a minute.
He's very close, he's seven forty-two. Eighteen more minutes.
Uh, you know, we also, you know, if we highlight that though, then, you know, Mr. Oblenis could also say, okay, well, fine, we won't connect to the thirties building, we'll do this. What, where I'm trying to get to is, what's the level of information that we need to provide for Mr. Oblenis or people like Mr. Oblenis to?
I think Mr. Oblenis could probably provide those, those questions.
You're so close. I'll ask again, I'll ask again at that point so you have the opportunity to.
I think the reality, you know, politically, people have asked us over and over again, what are you going to do with the thirties building? They don't want to see it just sitting there vacant.
They don't want to see it torn down.
And if we're going to do this work, our opportunity to subdivide off a postage stamp is, like, that's not going to happen. We're going to own that building.
And facilities, we had talked about.
We have to do something.
And facilities, we had talked about, you know, do we give it to this historical society? Because it's, they, they, there's a plaque on it that has historical relevance to the town and, you know, but we'd never discussed renovating it.
Again, I think we're getting into a future public conversation, so if I can, I'm going to limit us to make sure, does the board feel comfortable with the marching orders we have given Dr. Jettie to request from Kyle?
And let, let me just point out another thing if it helps the board. We had a budget, I'm doing this from memory, we had a budget to do this phase of the work. Remember, we were using like half of the money that's in the reserve fund. So, if we're over, we just can take more out of that fund, we can do that withdrawal later.
Or we can do it all out of the budget.
But I think we can get it done within the budget that we proposed. And so, I, I would just say, give us the marching order to go get it done, and paying for it, you have the money in the reserve fund, this is going to be a minimal cost. Because it's really updating a couple of documents and putting some numbers on it.
Get it done.
All right, so, I think Mr. Oblenis's future comment in eighteen minutes or whatever amount of minutes it is now. I'm comfortable with that direction. Do we need a motion to invite Mr. Oblenis to join the facilities?
Well, that's another agenda item.
That's, that's what I'm going up.
What I would like to do now, if we want, is I'd like to make a motion to move up public comment.
Sure.
To, to now.
Okay. Is there a second? We have a first and a second. Just as a further comment, do we feel like we need to vote for our marching orders? Are we going to do that after the public comment? I just want to make sure we buttoned things. Okay. So, there is a motion to move up our second public comment sec-, uh, session to right now, which is seven forty-five. So, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained. Mr. Oblenis, come on up. For our second, um.
Go around.
Second conversation with you. But yes, so this is our second, um, I'm just going to read what I'm supposed to, but I got to go to it. This is our second, second community input session of the night, which can be regarding any matters, not, it's not required to be stuck to the agenda. Again, technically, it's a three-minute limit. The board has been pretty flexible with that tonight.
They don't see a line behind Mr. Oblenis?
No, I'm assuming that we're not going to have a timer, but I just am putting it out there in terms of, I will try to keep comments to under fifteen minutes.
And I'll, I'll try to be succinct. First of all, I very much appreciate the discussion, and I am more than sensitive to the eleventh hour of my involvement, and I, I, I don't take that, you know, lightly. Um, I'm, I don't want to even get into it. I recognize it.
Thank you.
And so, I think this can actually happen fairly quickly. I would actually recommend that you move the, the full replacement forward to get that in process. And then, uh, what I'm hearing is that there's, there's consensus that we will look at the renovation option. And so therefore, if you have something in motion, the full replacement, then that can go forward. And if we are able to find the renovation is suitable, then we have to figure out how to do that backtrack, so that'd be my thought. To the, to the charge that I would recommend for Kyle is simply what I would like to see, and this is, is simply a plan of the renovations that, that, this, this level. So, um, and the cost estimate that goes with that, and I, and I'm sure that the cost estimate was presented, which is one page, has more backup to it. So, I would expect, you know, being able to work with Kyle, that we would see kind of the buildup of that or more. But included in this, you know, the, the crude staging plan that I developed is, is that's where you would sit down with Kyle and say, okay, do we want to include the thirties building? Because we need, you know, certain spaces, and that, this would fit into that. So therefore, it is, it is a economical way to use the building within the needs of what we have to provide. Or no, it's too expensive, so we eliminate that and we don't include it. So, but that's discussions that has to happen to really answer those questions, and we can't answer them now. You brought up the sewer issue, yeah, so we need to look at, okay. Where is the sewer? So, okay, so we can put the addition over here, or we have to move a, you know, a couple of tanks? That's something that you talk about once the engineers are sitting down and, you know, and somebody that has looked at it can answer the questions. It's, it's surely not your purview to do that.
Yeah, so we, we have had some of those questions, and that's why, that's why it's so hard. It would be, would have been wonderful to have you on that committee, because we have, you know, it's, it's so many hours of conversations.
I appreciate it.
I will tell you that what you're holding there may be outside the purview of, of what we can actually do cost-wise, but it, I don't, I also question whether it makes sense to go to that level of detail that they go to the designers, because I think him looking at the general idea of what you're proposing may be enough. But again, I would also like to get you something that does.
Satisfy.
Satisfy, like, actually satisfy. I don't want to give you, I don't want to give you an answer and have you be like, that doesn't really answer.
Well, here's the, I, I just need to have Kyle say, you know, I need to get to the point where, okay, um, okay, we'll do to the north, and we'll do to the south, and we'll do the elevator, and the two stories you talked about, cut out the thirties and do X, Y, and Z. The reason is that you need to be able, Kyle needs to have developed for his own mind what we're going to do for what amount of money. Because if he hasn't done sufficient, we'll call it design thought or evaluation, then a cost estimate becomes very much a liability for him. If he hasn't developed sufficiently what he's estimating, and that's, that's my point. And quite truthfully, this is a concept plan, and this is pretty cheap to do, particularly where, you know, most of these are just, it, it's not, you know, this is.
CAD document.
But, but what, but what actually went into that though was a considerable amount of time of a large team of people. So, while it does seem like it's, I agree, it seems simple.
And the reason I say that, and this is part of the reason I, I came up with this two-story, this is, this is two stories. It's got an elevator in it. Oh, that's a good idea, I like that.
Yeah.
So, that's how I came up with it, with the two stories to connect to nineteen thirties. And so, I'm not saying that's the final plan, but that's the type of give and take that I'm looking to have for conversations that says, oh, that's too expensive to do that, oh, that, well, that's too much money, let's do something different. The other side of it is, if you really do look at the core, just think about it, the core has got a lot of facilities in it. It's got the cafeteria, it's got the gymnasium, it's got the library, it's got the office spaces, it's got ten classrooms, and those don't need to be, I'll say don't need to be. Those have, those are the newer, um, facilities. And that's what I see, if that, if there is an option to be had, is saving the core and working around that and rehabbing the core. So, that's, and I think, and, and just based on the fact that he actually in this document says demolish the south end, exactly as I said, in fact, I didn't see that till I, till I was going back into it. Oh, oh, we're on the same page. So, I think it will take very small amount of time to get to the answer whether renovation. And I will, going back to your point, I actually think what this discussion has generated in town is probably the best publicity you could have. It really is. And, and I will say this, and I, you know, I said in my letter, and I've said it to people, in fact, I think I said it on John's show the other night. If I'm convinced that the replacement is, I'll be a best supporter, I really will.
Appreciate that.
You know, and I, and I'll make the presentation if you want. I really will. Same way I did with the, with this building. And the reason I think that's important is, is I've raised the questions, and if I'm convinced, then I don't think anybody else is going to say, no, the replacement isn't the right thing to do. to do. So, I think this is the best publicity you can have. I really do. So, I, I'm not here, I, I'm, I'm here to be as supportive, I, the frustration level on your side of the table, I know, has got to be immense. But, what I'm fearful of is I don't want to come to, to march and have you come up with a no answer. You know, that's, that's the ultimate worst case, right?
Yeah.
And, and that would be a travesty.
Just to be clear, my frustration level's not with you.
And, and I understand.
So I want to make sure you know that. My frustration level is just sitting here, watching this project, and feeling roadblocks and roadblocks, not that you're putting them up, but that we, you know, it's been a constant stream, and I really just wanna get out there and cheer for this, and, and
Well, what you, what I would do is get out and cheer. Look, we're moving forward with replacement, we're gonna look at this, is another option? Be ready to vote.
Yeah.
And, you know, I don't know about the timeline, whether, you know, as Andrew said, it may, if we come up with a renovation, it may kick us into a special meeting, but I would actually say that, you know, if I was somebody from the town, say, look, they actually think the renovation's the best thing, and it doesn't fit in the timeline, and they're gonna ask us, they're gonna pull this one, 'cause they wanna present something cheaper to us, I'll be the first one in the voting booth, 'cause the, the school board tried and did come up with something that saves me money. So look at it from that point of view, is that you can, you know, that's a, that's a glass half-full situation. A special meeting to, to save us money? Okay. Picture. Think about it that way.
I mean, I'm not concerned about going and getting some, some more information.
Absolutely not.
I'm really not super concerned about the timeline, it's not really, that's not stressing me.
Well, no, but I, but I, I understand you, you know, the need and, and the, and the proximity of time.
Yeah. I, I mean, again, very much appreciate the work that you're doing, and hopefully you're feeling like we are trying our best to get you information. I think you are acknowledging the fact that none of us are architects or construction professionals, so we've learned a lot over the last few years, we're trying our best, but, um, I, hopefully we will be able to deliver you something that will be substantive enough to, to make you feel
And, and I appreciate, I'd be happy to join the FIC if that's good petition.
We meet next week.
I have two other things I want to bring up for you, but
Before we leave it, can I just clarify one point, so I can read everything pretty well? What number is this?
Well
Build approximately, and I can't
I, I will, I will admit to you that in my drafting class, I didn't do well, 'cause my lettering skills are terrible.
I'm looking at ten, I'm looking at eighteen, I'm looking at
Well, the reason being, is, is it boils down to, um, in the, in the, in this plan, there's twenty-seven classrooms.
Okay.
And so part of it is, is when Kyle, we all look at it, is how many classrooms should we put up here? And should there be, you know, quite, quite truthfully, I think the core ought to be where you kinda have your special education things, and so some of these classrooms gets adapted to those. So it's kinda a discussion of the functionality of the building, and how many classrooms have to go up here, but at least it's gonna be like thirteen to fourteen, 'cause that's how many's down here. So if you, to replace that, it's gotta be at least in the neighborhood of fourteen up here, to be able to have the function of the building maintained, while we then go down and build down here. And so really, it's, it's kind of a function, this is ten down here, by the way.
It's ten.
It's ten.
It's five and five, though, right? It's five upstairs and five downstairs.
Yeah, but, yeah, I'm just, I'm thinking out loud and
We do, we do have limitations on the ages of kids that can be on a second story in elementary schools. There's a million, you're gonna have so much fun in the facilities committee, I promise.
Well, and that's, and that's why the north will be built likely at one level.
Sure.
And the south, then, you know, okay, who's gonna go down to the south, so that, that varies how many, what you have there. So, I understand all those things, but I don't have the answers to those when I was doing a sketch.
And remember, we have to meet, I mean, part of the reason why it's designed the way it is, is there's regulations about who you can put on a second floor, et cetera, so, but that helps me, and now I know we're looking at five classrooms upstairs, fourth grade is upstairs, I, I can run with that.
Yeah, I kinda, I kinda follow what he did in the second floor, I assume, you know, we're pattern something after that, instead of, you know, you put the kid, or fourth and third and fourth down there, I don't know, you know, kinda, whatever.
You had two other items?
Yes, really quick. Um, I wanna offer a comment on the, uh, school lunch. I, I would suggest that one of the things, uh, when I was touring the building with Dan Mitchell the other day, um, I had, we went in the cafeteria, and I asked him, you know, how many students normally take hot lunch? And he says it varies considerably, depending on what's happening. Pizza day, practically everybody.
Yep.
So, I filed that away. And then last week, you had a long discussion on the, on the school costs. So, one of the things that dawned on me is, two things. You had a concern about raising the cost of the per meal price.
Mm-hmm.
So, okay, um, and, and I'm sure there's some kids that take it every day, and to raise that would be a real burden. So what I propose that you think about is implementing a monthly pass, uh, where you buy a full, um, twenty or twenty-one days, and, you know, with the month of, for that month, and you can, you could come up with a range, I, I'm thinking somewhere between forty-five and maybe sixty-five dollars for the month. If you divide that out, that's somewhere between, you know, two dollars and three dollars. And all of a sudden, that, for the, for people to take it all the time, that gets reduced. Then what you do is, because it's so variable, what that says is that the kids are dictating which hot lunches they want for the ones that are up and down. All right? Well, make them pay for it.
So
Raise that to four, four dollars or five dollars. So, you know, just, just as a thought, and I, you can chew on that anyway, but
Here's the, here's the challenge that we actually ran up against.
Okay.
The, the challenge was that there's, the free and reduced lunch threshold is incredibly low to qualify for that, for a household income.
Yep.
To, to the point that, uh, going from, you know, three dollars to three seventy-five could very well have a very drastic impact on a subset of the population, which is above free and reduced lunch, that doesn't get any break, but still, you know, not able to, to shoulder that. So like, the idea was really not so much of, like, if, you know, I'll use myself as an example, if we go up to five dollars for lunch, I'll either buy my daughter lunch or I won't, I'm not gonna be impacted by that. We're more concerned about that population that's going to be impacted.
Yep.
And unfortunately, that doesn't solve that issue for us either, it's, it's just a matter of
Well, what
It, it doesn't reduce the cost for them, like, if the cost goes up for them, they may not be able to afford that, so that was really
Well, and, and even in the monthly, what you would look at is the people that need to be subsidized, it wouldn't be the forty-five, it would be what, what is, you would only charge that group of people ten dollars, twenty, whatever the, the, the metric comes out, but the people that can afford it, okay, look, I want my kids, you know, I don't wanna pack lunches, yeah, I can get a monthly pass for five, you know, two dollars and fifty cents, you're taking your hot lunch every day. Or, so, I just throw that out as consideration.
It's an idea. I know Lauren does have some quote-unquote premium meals at the high school level.
Yep.
She has meals that, you know, that, it's like the, um, the orange chick, the Mandarin chicken, and, you know, the highly popular meals, she, they cost more to produce because they're, you know, really tasty.
But there's higher sales.
But there's higher sales, so she prices those at a higher rate.
So anyway, this is just a thought.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
And then the other thing I want to, um, put in a word of support for you, um, I also heard a lot of discussion last week on the frustration regarding new positions or whatever you're gonna call them, and I asked, uh, uh, John Son to send me, this is the Warren article that you've all been talking about, and, you know, I've been here since ninety-nine, so I voted on these, uh, I actually don't remember how I voted on them, I don't even remember these things. So the point being is, I went back and looked at them, there's two articles in here, the second one, um, if I can just read them for the people out there, maybe it'll be helpful. The first one is the petition article number one, which, uh, was voted on March two thousand and three, and it reads, "As a community operating on a Senate Bill Two RSA forty, colon, thirteen, we support the Litchfield School Board creating separate Warren articles for new positions, increased hours of staff, new equipment and architectural work. The Litchfield Board will then be continuing past practice to provide voters with greater choice on increases in school spending." Increases on school spending. This is a petition Warren article. And then this other one, uh, article twenty-one, that was, uh, voted on in March two thousand and four, "Shall the Litchfield School District support the school board in placing in the operating budget those positions agreed to by the Budget Committee that are intended to meet minimum state and federal requirements or to maintain service or to maintain services at current year's level?" That's what it says. This is a non-binding advisory auto. I will actually state on the record, I have no idea what that article means. I can't, how many times I've read, I don't know what it means. I honestly don't. So, I was confused by that, I think, at the time I read it. So, going back to the original March one article, I believe, and, and also, I, I don't know if this is on your website, this document with it?
It's on our agenda tonight, yeah.
Is it? I suggest people read it, because it includes your attorney's evaluation of this, and quite truthfully, you were charged with operating the school, and the Warren article, as I read it, that we voted on, deals with increases in spending. And to me, when I voted on that, I said, you folks, the increase in, in spending comes to us annually, it has an increase in the budget. If you wanna add five, you know, additional positions within your total budget, that increases your budget by those five positions, then that goes through as, as either a Warren article, or it's included in your operating budget for the next year.
So those are the two questions that you just answered there.
Yeah.
So, so those are two separate Warren articles?
Yeah.
The second one seems to be actually what you're indicating
Your support for.
Your support for.
Yeah, I don't, but, yeah, but I'm not, I don't know
The, the, the million-dollar question of what you're, you're asking and answering right now is, do we have to put everything out on a specific warrant, so, so
One by one.
Right.
Perfect example is, you know, a school counselor, that was a consideration this year, do we have to put that in front of the voters to vote yes or no on that, or should we, as the board, be authorized to just present that in, wrapped into the budget?
Well, two things, I'm gonna take a step back. You're dealing with, what is it, a special educated position?
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's what I wanna focus on. My opinion, you, if I understand correctly, you could fund that within the budget you have today. You're, you're struggling with, is that a new position? And, is that right?
Well, you're close, because it's a, because it's a collective bargaining unit, any agreements, any contracts with a collective bargaining agreement, unit has to be good before the voters, it has to be approved by the voters, right?
Uh, I'm not quite sure, so he's referring to the special, well, there's a special education teacher that's, that in the budget is gonna move from the high school to the elementary school, but we're also reducing by a, a math teacher at the high school, and I believe your opinion is, if we, if that, that would should give us a flexibility to go up by a position someplace else.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
That's my, my point, in fact, uh, my wife taught in, in LMS here, um, back, not too many years ago, I don't wanna
Don't say that, we're gonna call her a sub.
Yeah, I have to be careful what I say, yeah. But, as a friend's instance, she was hired as an English teacher, and two years in, they need a math teacher. Will you teach math? Yeah? Yeah, sure. So, was that a new position? No, just moved from English to math.
Right.
So my point being, I, you know, I, I'm just here to support you, and you need to be, I would say, this article says you have flexibility within your budget, so long as it doesn't increase your overall budget, to do what you are responsible to do, and manage the staff and everything else in there, and if we don't like what you did at the end of the year, what happens? You get, you know, either the budget doesn't get approved, or there's a new set of folks sitting at the table. So, anyway, that's just my, my comments of support, hopefully it's
Appreciate it.
Thank you for listening to every aspect of our meetings, 'cause you're probably one of the very few that does.
I, I found it interesting, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Yep. And I'm not sure where that little
Sorry, we'll pick it up later.
All right, so we were putting under old business, um, the Facilities Improvement Committee, I know technically the next is a solar update, but I, while Mr. Oblenis is here, wanna go ahead and just address that, although we need to finalize what we're, our marching orders are, so before I get there, let's finalize our marching orders
Yeah.
Um, for Kyle.
I, I think it makes sense to have Kyle revisit what, what Doug just showed us. I think it would be helpful to show him Mr. Oblenis's plan, understanding, I, I, you can ask him about the level of detail that, that rendering, I, I know what went into that rendering, I think we're looking at thousands of dollars if, if they try to do that, but I would like you to ask him that, at least to, you know, package something that we can more completely answer, Mr. Oblenis.
So again, so Mr. Oblenis was, you know, when we, we met with him too, you know, I think he based a lot of his stuff, again, off of Kyle's work, and again, just getting it to updated numbers. In regards to the plan, I think the cost would be more than we necessarily would expect, but I think it's, it's the hours, 'cause again, this isn't, this isn't Kyle, this is Kyle reacting to what this school, what this town wants. So this is more than Kyle kinda creating the flow of the school, so this is hours upon hours of multiple people's
Kyle and Steve. That was three, that was three, two or three different organizations that produce
Yeah.
Right.
So if we were to produce a map of what the renovations would look like, um, that, that would be then apples to apples, it would be a lot of hours.
But that's why I think giving him, Mr. Oblenis's suggestion, so he has just like a framework of what the community, what's being represented by the community, as a concept, maybe he could better address the list that you have there, recognizing, you know, for example, if we keep the core of the building, there is gonna be a water mitigation component of that, HVAC is gonna be, you know, that's an existing building, so retrofitting HVAC to work throughout the whole building, you know, just those kinda considerations, he might be able to better.
If it makes any difference, I would be happy to join the conversation up front with Kyle, if it'd help, if it'd be helpful.
I think, yeah.
Yeah, we can format, you know, decide on the format for our next meeting.
Yeah, I'm gonna start with a call to Kyle.
Yeah, that's gotta be the starting point. Does the board feel like we need to vote on this, or do we feel like we are in agreement on what we're asking?
Superintendent's marching orders, I think it's clear on our discussion what we're trying to achieve here.
Okay, I agree.
I think the second part too was a timeline, what, how would it impact learning in a way projected time?
That was for Dan. I, I think Dan is
That's for Kyle, too.
Construction, Dan's not gonna necessarily know construction, how long it's gonna take to build.
He might be able to answer the impact question, but
The displacement piece of it, though, I think he was willing to chime in on, yeah.
Okay, I think we got it, thank you.
Thank you. All right, now moving on to the request to discuss Facility Improvement Committee, did you have a motion you wanted to make on the
Well, I don't, what's the
Or discussion.
What is the, uh, what is the order here to have Mr. Oblenis join that committee?
I think we should just do it as a motion.
Is it, but is it, is it a board assignment? Is it managed within the Facilities Committee? Like, I just wanna make sure we're doing this right.
Well, when you created that subcommittee
We did have a community member opening on that committee, so he would just be filling in that committee, so, I don't know if that's a function of the board or a function of the committee.
Let's just make it simple for tonight's purposes, so
Make a motion to, uh, have Mr. Oblenis join the Facilities Improvement Committee effective immediately.
As a community member, as the community
As a, as a community
Second, Ben.
There's a second, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstained.
Your next meeting is January tenth.
Welcome.
I hope you have some free time.
Okay, um, moving into the LMS solar project update.
One sec, let me just
Nope, you're good.
Capture that, like, this agenda is like moving all over the place, so
I know, sorry. How's the manifest?
Uh, two signatures.
Okay.
Two-thirds of the way there.
Mm-hmm.
And I wasn't even really wanting it.
Nope, Matt specifically pointed to this side of the table this time, so, next time I'm going to the right.
All right, so just quick update on the LMS solar project, uh, right before the break, materials arrived there, I think we reported that's the board at the last meeting, um, the permits have been filed and we're awaiting word from the town, so it's in the town's hands at this point. Um, I did a, uh, just a check-in with Jeff Blackwell today, to let him know that, you know, I'm ready to help answer questions, or, you know, set up a meeting to go over stuff, whatever, it would be helpful to him, so, I did do that check-in, um, hopefully we'll get started ASAP.
So we've submitted the permits to the town?
Correct. Yep, the town has those, um, they did not charge us the fee, because they said as a government entity, we're exempt from the fee for the permits, so that was a savings of a few bucks for us, um, but, anyway.
So that's pending?
It is pending, it's, it's in the town's
Any idea how long it takes to review?
Don't, and it really depends on the complexity of the plans and so forth, um, so, we'll, we'll see, we'll wait till you're back, I'm sure Jeff will get back to me pretty quickly.
Will they be shoveling the roof, or it installed?
Are you expecting snow sometime soon?
Well, man, that's what
Sunday.
Yeah, Sunday, followed by rain, it's gonna melt it all, so, anyway, we'll, uh, we'll see what actually happens, but if necessary, yes, they will be shoveling.
Boy, it will be nice to be able to close that project.
Yeah, and just a reminder that the, the full force of the PPA is in effect at this point, I mean, we're getting the benefit of it without having the solar
It's not costing us more.
Yeah, it's not costing taxpayers, so that's, that's a plus at this stage. All right, that's my solar update, um
Oh, let's move along then to the annual meeting timeline?
Yep, and so, on the timeline, there's really nothing, well, a couple of things are new, I apologize, so, you have a copy of the bond hearing notice and the budget hearing notice, uh, just so the board is aware, those are the notices that we worked on with bond counsel, um, they are posted on the bulletin board outside here as of today, they are posted at Campbell High School as of today, they are on our website as of They are on our website as of today. They will run in the union later tomorrow, so you can look through those postings. And then I believe they're gonna be posted at GMS and LMS tomorrow also. So that will satisfy all the posting requirements that we have. It actually exceeds the requirements for posting. And I updated the invite for next Thursday because it said budget committee, I think, and now it says bond hearing and budget hearing. So remember that we're gonna start, the board will conduct a bond hearing at 6:30. It's a pretty tight hearing. It's really the nature of what the bond would be and the payback and so forth and an opportunity for the public to weigh in on that, so.
You updated the invite?
To next Thursday.
The 11th.
The 11th.
I don't see an invite that. I only say that because if I don't see invites on my calendar, I'm.
I might not have you yet, so that might be old. Let me fix that, Matt, because I think you've joined.
I tend to not show up at things unless it gets automatically added to my calendar.
All right. I, I work the same way. You know what it is? The school board, I sent it to the school board as a group and you're on there though. It says it, it went to you.
I see budget committee for that day.
Yeah.
But I don't see, and I tend to ignore the budget committee.
It should now say bond and budget hearing, so.
It says it on the.
No, it just somehow, something you just did updated it, so.
So you ignore the budget committee, huh?
I watch.
I just want to be clear going into tomorrow's meeting, what's gonna be set?
I watch every single meeting, every single meeting, actually. And that's, that's fact. I do watch them all.
All right.
I just don't attend them.
A reminder to the board, you know, this is Kayla's first time going through all these legal postings and legal requirements, and so we are meeting very frequently and I'm doing a lot of double, triple checking to make sure, because the last thing we want to do is jeopardize a bond vote because we didn't dot an i. And so I'm working very closely to make sure that this gets done and done correctly.
Have we, if we actively, are we still secured and working with our bond counsel at this point?
Yep, we've signed the engagement letter. Remember, there's no fee at this point.
Right, so she's looking over everything and making sure where every i is dotted.
And so we did a draft bond notice. She redlined it back to us and we accepted every redline and that's what, that's what you're looking at, so. Yeah. So let me, so really the next thing I want to just walk the board through is the warrant articles and to make sure the public understands. So I'm gonna project this so that our folks in Litchfield TV can pick this up for the feed also. This document has evolved and evolved. I've now deleted the words extremely drafty and it's just a draft, so it's come a long way. We also met with Gordon tonight and he, he redlined some things. And one thing I'll point out is that he, thank God he did this, he advised us to move away from archaic language. So DRA is apparently, you know, you no longer have to have at 3 o'clock in the 4 noon of the, you know, that language. It just says, it says 3 PM, right? So 4 noon would be AM. And so this is, you're gonna see it kind of updated to modern English, if you would. The meeting dates are at the top, just as a reminder. We then warned people about the deliberative to take place on February 10th at 10 o'clock AM. And then our second session is voting on Tuesday, March 12th. And the polls are open from 7 to 7, 7 AM to 7 PM. Article A, we will be deleting what's in green, so AIM seat and Shoemaker's seat will come off before this gets posted, but just tracking so that anybody who's wondering, and we verified that the three-year terms are accurate. So Heidi served a full three-year term and can run, or somebody can run for a second or successor three-year term. Matt filled out the rest of Liz's three-year term, so it's a three-year term. It's not a one-year to finish it out or anything, it's a three-year term. So that is all accurate. That is Article A, and I asked about that today. Article A are items that are done at the polls, so you don't take action on Article A at deliberative. That's held off and that's why it's A versus 1. So then you come to the polls, or to deliberative, I'm sorry, and you have the articles to discuss. So Article 1, this is the language that Gordon has come up with, and it's really to raise an appropriate sum of $44,290,000 to fund the design construction and original equipping of a new Litchfield Elementary School on the site of the current Griffin Memorial School. And to authorize the school board to accept on behalf of the district state building aid in the amount of $5,672,130, which is the 80% of the maximum. That's the part that we feel most comfortable guaranteeing. If we were to put the 7 million in and for some reason not to qualify that, we would have to find the difference in our budget. And so Gordon's advice is to be conservative and to use that number, leaving the balance of $38,617,870 to be raised by the issuance of bonds or notes in compliance with the Municipal Finance Act as amended. With such bonds or notes to be issued in phases over multiple years and amounts to be determined by the school board, which amount shall not in the aggregate exceed the 38 million referenced above. And we're gonna go into a little more depth. I'm gonna have Doug talk about why we've ordered it that way, but it gives the, it's actually the best way for the taxpayers to, to get their value out of the bonding amount by allowing you to sell multiple bonds over time and to phase it so that you can take best advantage of not only what the rates are, but also not just have money sitting in a bank account that you're paying interest on and earning not as much interest on. And then you will issue, negotiate, sell and deliver the bonds and notes to determine the rate of interest they're on, et cetera, et cetera. I'm not gonna read all the rest of it. The one thing we do have to do is get the final amount, which is what the first year payment would be, and we're gonna need bond counsel to advise us on exactly the number to use there, which then will fold into an estimated tax impact for us. This will take a three-fifths vote. This is new, updated language that avoids the problem that some other districts have run into with the way they have worded stuff in the past, so we feel pretty good about it. But Doug, you want to talk about the phasing aspect of it and what your thoughts are?
Yeah, so as we looked into different options, you know, one thing that I kept on going back to was the timeline for a new build. So we would have the bond vote March 12th of 2024. If we went with the bond bank, we would have our first money wired August of 2024. But construction wouldn't begin until March of 2025, because before construction to begin, you know, what we have from the architect right now is conceptual plans. And then there are those hundreds or thousands of decisions that then make it into the architectural plans, which then create hundreds of pages for the school to be built. So that takes months of work to do. So the thought was, why have a bond, especially now when we expect interest rates to go down, that we're kind of grabbing the whole thing when interest rates could be higher? So we could get a bond in August of '24 for the pre-construction costs. And then we would then after, remember, the majority of this is gonna be raised locally from the 44 million, but that building aid comes after those architect plans are complete and after the guaranteed maximum price and all, and all your contracts are signed and the state fire marshal also is aware of the building and signs off on the building, the construction as well. So that we expect to get around January or February of 2025. So again, that would be before construction begins as well. So we're seeing three possible bonds, two or three bonds and one note. So the first would be the August of 2024, pre-construction costs for a bond. We'd receive 80% of the building aid, or that 5.6 million, January, February 2025. We also see going for a winter sale bond, which we'd receive bond proceeds February of 2025 for the remainder of the construction costs. And then we could do a bond, third bond, August of 2025 for the equipment costs because the, the foundation is going in around July of 2025. We would then have a chance to kind of make sure we're paying for the equipment, some equipment you have to pay in advance. We'd have that money for that as well. And then we'd look to secure a short-term note in summer 2026 when we have a better idea of what is the remaining amount we're gonna get from the, from building aid. Because again, we are using a lower estimate for building aid, knowing that we're gonna receive more. And we're giving ourselves the ability to bond between our lower estimate and the maximum price that we're using for the construction of this, of 44,290,000. So we need to pay for that, though we don't get our last bit from the state aid until we show all our expenses. And then usually it's a dialogue, they said, between one or three months before we get the remainder amount for that. But obviously the invoices are gonna be due before that. So if we had a short-term note for what we project to be what the, what we'd be receiving for remainder of the building aid, then that would be paid off pretty quickly. And again, we would be conservative on what we use for that as well. So with that being said, this, this gives us options on hopefully securing better interest rates. And if we got to, the reason we say two or three bonds is if we get to February of 2025 and interest rates are unbelievable and we want to kind of grab a larger bond at that point, why not do that type of thing? So it gives us flexibility with that. It also gives us flexibility with how long of a term we want to go for. So for a construction bond, the larger bond that we might go for, we might choose to do a 30-year run on that, because again, that construction of the building is going to last much longer than 30 years. So why not spread it over the people who are gonna use it for well over 30 years? For some of the equipment costs, which might not last you your 30 years, maybe we decide to do, you know, a 10-year bond or a 15-year bond, kind of looking at where we're at with other costs for the district at that time as well. So it will give us greater flexibility. It will give us a better chance to get to those lower interest rates, because our first bond, if it just has to be pre-construction costs, we need to talk with bond counsel, but we also have to talk with Kyle to kind of narrow down what are those pre-construction costs and what number should we be using for that? But that, that first bond could be, you know, I'm not quite sure exactly, but you know, it could be somewhere around four, five million, you know, where you're grabbing your pre-construction costs. And then again, your second bond is gonna be your larger of all the bonds. And, and the good news about this is it's very transparent to the taxpayers that we cannot go above a certain dollar. It's only authorized, and even though there are several bonds that might be issued and a note, no matter what we do, it can't go over the 38 million.
So by doing them in phases, you're also not accruing interest on the full amount. So you're not, not just getting better interest rates, but you're also not accruing interest for periods of time.
For periods of time.
So, you know, interest on 40 or 38 million dollars.
Yeah.
In one chunk is, that's probably an appreciable savings.
And I definitely appreciate, I know there's been talk about, you know, it's a $44 million project. No, it's a $70 million project because you have to include the interest. But what we know is, is no matter what, we don't know the interest at this point. Even if we bonded all of it or minus the building aid of 5.6 million, we bonded 38 million, and even if we bonded for 30 years and we couldn't refinance for 10 years, at some point, we would refinance and at a lower interest rate and the payments would go down. So we are very, you know, we want to say, yes, it's gonna cost the taxpayers more than 44,290,000, but that part is still unknown. And our goal is to get the interest as low as possible. This gives us some chances at that. So the only firm number, the, the two firm numbers there, well, the main firm number is a 44,290,000. So when we talk about the project, this is allowing the building to be, with architecture fees and everything else, 44,290,000. Again, that's gonna cost the taxpayers more in interest. But again, when we talk about interest too, we can't say it's gonna cost us 70,000 because then you have to kind of, you have to put in inflation. So, you know, because your, your dollar 29 years from now is different from your dollar today as well. So the, the concrete number that, that kind of, the taxpayers, I would want them to kind of look at, is that 44,290,000, knowing it's gonna be addition, you know, interest on top of that, but we're gonna have a chance to kind of work on that interest throughout that time as well.
So I think that just needs to be made clear deliberately and through all the channels, right, that based upon what we can present legally, right, we're not including interest payments in this, we're going with the 44,290, right? And that, that's what we've heard from our legal team and that's what from, I believe, the bond that we're able to put on a warrant article. Is that true?
That is accurate. I mean, this, these are the amounts that need to be there and, you know, the original draft of this language included, you know, something about getting the state building aid or something. Well, even factoring that in becomes a little bit of a problem versus the check and balance on that is the 38 million. That's what the voters are authorizing us to borrow. So, you know, the, we think we're gonna get more like 7 million and be able to pay some of that back more quickly because we're not gonna need the full 38 to be borrowed. But we have to write it in this way to frame it so that people understand kind of the worst-case scenario.
And just to avoid any confusion, if we got the full 7 million, the project still can't go above 44,290. So we're not getting an extra 2 million to just play with. It's, it's still, the project's still capped at that.
And that's one of the reasons for chunking the bonds too, because on bond banks, you can't prepay back the bond. So if we get money back from the state, we would want some amount that we're raising to either be a short-term note or a private type, going for like a private bank where we can prepay or a municipal lease, if that makes sense. But more likely some type of more of a bond or a note at that point.
Sorry.
How does that work then? That's why you do a note at the end, because you have to bridge the gap for when you get that last remaining 20%?
Yeah.
We can include some of this information on the voter guide as well?
Yeah.
Yes, and, and I think we have to explain this to people and just be clear that, you know, all of this is intended to be good stewards of the money that we're borrowing and make sure that we're being, taking advantage of every possible way to minimize the cost.
So can I just ask then, based off of that last analysis, if we're talking about having to cover the five or basically the, oh no, it's, it's, what is it, only 20% of the, 20% of the 5 million?
No, it's 20% of the 7 million.
20% of the 7 million?
Which is like 1.4.
So this 38 million accounts for the fact that, there's gotta be some overlap, right? Because the 38 million would be offset.
It'd be 1.4 million less if it was the full amount, but we're not getting the full amount.
Okay, all right.
So hopefully at the end of the day, if we got the full amount, we'd take the 38 million, we'd be able to pay back around 1.4 million back to it. So our bonds outstanding would be 1.4 million less than that 38 million.
I have two points, if I may. I think the first point will probably be easier than the second point.
Okay.
All right, first point being, it's gonna come up tomorrow. We know we're gonna hear it. How come we can't put a table on here with the costs per year?
How come we can't put a table?
How come we cannot put a table underneath the warrant article?
Because we don't know the interest rate.
I'm just saying.
We can, we can estimate the interest rate.
But also I understood from our last budget committee meeting that, again, we're not able to put a table because of the strict guidelines from our lawyers and from the bond counsel.
That's my understanding, but I, I did not ask that question today. I forgot about the table question.
It's gonna come up tomorrow.
Okay, so I will have an answer before it comes up tomorrow.
So again, by, by chunking it out, the only table that we could put would be for what we believe we're gonna go for our first bond for, that amount. Which if we put it underneath that, I think it's a little bit deceiving than putting it in the voter guide as far as like, this would be our first one, knowing that we're gonna have additional bond, bonds out there as well.
I, I think your, I think your tables belong in all the voter guide information, not in the warrant itself. The warrant is just, here's the question.
Here's the question, answer.
You had a second question?
Second question is, and I know I'm gonna point to Mr. Oblenis again, right, because I know there was a lot of discussion, certainly over our drinks the other day, about the contingency within the 44,290, right, and how seemingly it seems very low. And what we don't want to have is another situation, certainly like the middle school, where we're looking for more money, right? And is that contingency really sufficient to cover the size and scale of this type of project?
So I've all but held a gun to Kyle's head and asked him, literally, I mean, how many times?
I've asked him several times.
Hey, wait.
I've asked him several times.
Going out of this, one more time before the vote people.
No, no, listen, I appreciate the question. We, we have asked this ad nauseam, like, because my, my point was, I don't want to be in that position. I would rather just put a bigger number if we need to, if that's reasonable.
Right.
Or even if it's remotely reasonable, right? And not only did Kyle reiterate that point, but the construction managers also said, no, these, these are reasonable numbers for us to be estimating.
Perfect.
Andrew, if you want to email us like a specific question regarding that, we'll, we'll, we'll ask, like, I have no problem, I've asked Kyle almost every single time.
I don't, but what I'd like to do is put our new facilities improvement or member on point if I could, right? Maybe a microphone would be appropriate.
Well, I think, I think it's when we're meeting with Kyle at facilities improvement. We have one more person asking the question, right? It's not gonna go away. There's a contingency in that budget.
I get it, I'm just sensitive to, well, I'm gonna vote on this, I think, tonight. So I want to make sure that I get it right.
I appreciate the question. I think we've talked about it even here and you've asked that question, I think.
They're definitely, full disclosure, there definitely comes to a point where I am not a construction manager, so I am relying on the professionals. But I, the one thing I can tell you is, I have asked the question a thousand times. So in the, hopefully unlikely event that something does go awry with that, I, you know, you can go back to the, to the record to reflect that we've, we've asked that question a million times.
But we'll bluntly ask it again on Monday. Kyle wasn't part of the middle school project, but we'll bring that up, we'll say, you know, which we brought up before with him, but we'll bluntly ask it again on Monday because and with Matt, you know, the more we ask him, the more that he's thinking about it and that hopefully if he says, nope, you need to add more, eventually he's going to say, no, you need to add more.
We all appreciate, we just have to have it right, right? I'm trying to have.
Yeah, well, listen, I've been at the public blood baths. I don't want to be the subject of one.
Oh, but it's so fun. But I think we've also, we've, we have also learned our lesson from the LMS project. We've seen what can happen and in the accounting of it and in the, you know, in the execution of it. And I think just keep asking the question and making sure that we're covered. Definitely an opportunity to do better this time around.
We have, we have specifically raised examples from the LMS project with them though to illustrate why. Because I think sometimes they think we have amnesia, like, we're asking the same question over and over again.
He knows it's a sensitive issue.
He does, he does.
He's in the meetings where Jen is giving the updates on the LMS project too, so.
Right. But I'm saying, we've used those as illustrative points as well.
So I'd like to make a motion while we're on this article, right? I just want to be clear on what the blank dollar amount is.
We can't answer that question.
So how do I motion for that with the blank dollar amount?
What are you trying to motion?
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to get the school board vote on this article going into tomorrow in the in the budget committee meeting.
I have a comment. I'm of the belief that this article should be contingent upon getting this state aid.
But that's the way that this is drafted.
It's not drafted that way. It says it's, we can only spend thirty eight six, which means something changes with the forty four two.
So that's the contingency though, Peter, because if if we get zero from the state, we're building a thirty eight million dollar school.
Yeah. But is there a plan for that? And what changes? I think you're, we're going to be much better off if you put it in the warrant article that says it's contingent upon getting the state aid. Otherwise, people are going to have the same thought I have. Well, what happened, now we've said it's raise and appropriate forty four two, and I know it says it can only be thirty eight six. Well, then what comes out, what six million dollars comes out of the school?
Right.
So as of four hours ago, it was in the warrant article, and Gordon took it out, did he?
He, so the original draft of this, he's, he's, so if you remember in the conversation, he said that communities trust the school board
But this one doesn't.
to do the right thing. And he said, you're limited to spending thirty eight million dollars if you don't get any building aid. And, you know, you can go out and find, his phrasing was, you can find a sugar daddy to donate money toward it. He's like, it's up to you to figure out how you want to fund above and beyond, but you're limited to thirty eight million dollars in bonding. And so you would then trust the board to figure out what to do if the state aid did not come.
In other towns, yes. I would predict that tomorrow night, the budget committee will require such a clause be inserted into this warrant article just like they did with the land purchase article, that it's contingent on receiving that aid.
I think if it's not in there, it doesn't have a real chance.
So, yeah, so I mean, I think that, I understand, you know, from the lawyer perspective of this, you have to try to think it through every possible scenario, right? And we probably will miss some scenario that the town would have been okay with. But I do agree with Peter that I think that we probably need that language in there for the purpose of of the transparency of it. Recognizing that Gordon is trying to protect against, like, if we did have some donor come in, right? I think the town would have been like, okay, cool, like, we only got, we didn't get it, we got thirty eight million dollars. We're totally happy to have a seven million dollar donation.
A community that's above us on the list has somebody donating a significant amount of money toward their project.
Right, so we will, so we will.
Sorry?
Because isn't it true that they've also lost the building aid because of that?
Except they then went to the legislature and had the law changed so that that does not impact their building aid. They get their full building aid amount, and then that is a donation toward the local portion only. So the law got changed by that community.
Seriously, I hadn't heard that.
Which is great. So if there's somebody sitting out there with a pile of money that they'd like to help us with.
I told Matt earlier today.
Peter was queued up to donate.
If I had won eight hundred and eighty million dollars the other day, I would have wrote a check for the forty million.
But alas, he did not.
But I did not. So you're going to get my whatever property tax bill.
So we do, we do run, I mean, we just have to be aware that we do run the unintended consequence of if something else were to materialize that would allow for that. Like, so I understand it from Gordon's perspective, we're telling the town, like, we we will not spend more than thirty eight million dollars of your money. Right, so I guess we just have to balance out. We just have to weigh that out and say, I don't think it's necessarily disingenuous the way that Gordon has done this. I think it does provide some protections that we're not going to foresee at the table. Would just, do we want to take that risk?
What I, what I'd like to ask, I mean, first of all, you don't have to vote tonight. We don't have a number to put in there. We can't put a tax impact on this. Generally, you like, I think I'm hearing that you like the concept that there would be multiple bonds and that the board should be able to figure out the actual financing and so forth. Let me go back to Gordon, because this was a three o'clock phone call. This is an email that came to me in the car driving from the office to here. And then I pasted this in and had to fix some things, because it was a red line. I just finalized it for you. Let us have one more conversation with Gordon about the word contingency, or I'm sorry, not contingent, contingent on the the bond money and see if there's some way that he feels comfortable about weaving that in.
And you're going to ask him about the table? The other is, could we put in, without having to do a table, if we get an idea or a best guess on what the total cost would be, you could add that to it as a sentence as opposed to a table? Would be, would be my.
We're not going to know the total cost.
And the problem with that is, if we put, if you try to say an estimate in there, someone's going to hinge on, no, this is what you put in there. That's where you get challenged on it. Also, just to, just to reiterate the point that we were just discussing, because I'm trying to think through every possible scenario. You could preclude, like, if you said state building, you could preclude if there was some sort of federal grant that developed, right? Like, you could preclude a lot of different things just by not permitting it the way that Gordon has drafted it. So just a couple of things for us to consider.
Alright, so we'll take that back to Gordon and get advice from the board. Before I move on, I'm going to look at Cory when I say this, because the law requires Article One to be a bond vote. So we are required by law to have any bond vote be the first item of business. So that results in a domino effect down the line because we have a bond vote on there. So now I'm going to come to Article Two. And Article Two, as it currently is proposed, is the operating budget article. And so that is, and the dollar amounts are what Doug has verified from the budget committee number and the default number that he has shared with everybody. So that language, I think, is the same as what you saw the last time. I don't think we've modified anything. The adds are the operating budget. If passed, would result in an eight cent reduction in the tax rate. And if the default budget is what we were operating with, then it would be a thirty six cent reduction in the tax rate. And I want Doug, because at first I go, wait a minute, it's up, why is it?
That's why I'm going, I'm trying to go back for your, to your Excel sheet.
So Doug, explain how you, why this is.
So the only thing that has to happen of all the warrant articles is we have to have a budget. So the only thing that gets compared to last year's tax rate is the the budget, the operating budget or the default budget. So this, right now, you know, it's thirteen dollars and ninety six cents on your tax bill. So that thirteen ninety six is made up of a couple of different things. So it's made up of the operating budget from last year, which also included the amount that we put to finish Phase Two of LMS, and it also included the four hundred and ninety seven thousand dollars for the land. All that came together, that's what needed to be appropriated by the town and was now on your tax bill at thirteen dollars and ninety six cents. So this is the only article that is compared to that because it's the only thing that has to happen. Everything else is an addition and can or cannot happen. So we're comparing it to thirteen dollars and ninety six cents. So, and what we're doing is we're following what the the town is doing, and they took their valuation from last year, and then they added two million. So we're taking the number, we're dividing it by that valuation, and now that's your per thousand cost. And the operating budget comes at eight cents less than that thirteen dollars and ninety six cents that is currently on on your tax bill for this year. And again, to put it all out there, part of the reason is, is last year, we raised four hundred and ninety seven thousand dollars for the land. This year, we'll be returning four hundred and ninety seven thousand dollars for the land too, because your tax bill is made up of your net. So you have your gross amount that you need to raise, but then it's decreased by revenue. It's decreased by fund balance. It's decreased by anything else being returned to the town. It's decreased by the amount of adequacy aid that we're going to get from the state and swept, which is a statewide property tax, which is retained by Litchfield as well. So you start with your gross, but then you decrease it by all of those factors. And that's where you're then finding what the tax rate is.
So, question. So the the money that was moved from the reserve funds or the trust funds last year to close the gap on LMS? Is that what you were talking about at the beginning?
No, that was two years ago. So that, that, and that doesn't, that doesn't impact the tax rate because that's not, that that money's already been raised. It's not being raised. So but last year, when we, when we built the budget last year, we put, I think it was, I don't know if it was like four hundred and seventy thousand, because we looked at where we were with Phase Two of the middle school. We looked at what we had left in the municipal lease, and then there was going to be a difference. And we needed to fund that difference, and we felt the best way to do that is to be upfront with the taxpayers and say, hey, we're going to be roughly four hundred and seventy thousand dollars short, let's raise that money. So that amount was raised currently, right now, for for this year. But that's a one-time expenditure, because hopefully Phase Two is ending at some point. So we're not, we're not going to raise money again for for that. So that's one of the reasons why last year was about four hundred and seventy thousand more. This year is right from the, right from the beginning, four hundred and seventy thousand dollars less. Because it's everything that went into the budget that we needed to appropriate and raise money for.
But it was, didn't we, didn't we move money from these two trust fund, trust accounts?
Two years ago.
We did that in September of twenty twenty two, right? But we did that to close the books as of June thirtieth of twenty twenty two. Right, so because of the audits and the paperwork, right, we had to do that in September in order to close the books for that prior June.
So that money didn't get included as part of the budget?
That was not part of the budget.
That was not part of last, no.
No.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that money was allowed because you can always increase, there's only certain reasons why you can increase the budget, but part of it is if you have reserve funds, you can use that towards spending.
Doug's first three months with us.
I'll make a motion to recommend Article Two. Or do we want to hold off and vote on all of them at the same time?
I think Andrew would desperately love to have some things that we voted on tomorrow.
I'm happy to oblige.
I mean, either way, the budget committee, I think, is not going to be voting on any of these tomorrow night, so.
That was what Mr. Sun said in his email, was that they were going to hold off.
At the same time, if we can and move it forward, I think we should.
Yeah.
So my motion stands.
So there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the Article Two language, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, houses recommended, five zero zero.
Excellent, thank you. The next one.
I'll make a motion to approve Article Four.
Is just the contingency in case, right?
Second.
Yeah.
And please note, the budget committee does not vote on this because it's a non-budgetary item.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, I'm not a big fan of this, second bite at the apple thing.
It's for voter approval. We can't do it without voter approval.
Yeah, I, in my, in my mind, I would agree with you, Peter, but this is giving the voters the choice, right? So if they want it, they can vote for it. If they don't.
They say no.
They say no.
And so, functionally speaking, what, can we just talk through really quickly, like, what type of scenario would, like, would they have voted down the budget?
Article Three fails.
Right.
No, it's tied to Article Three being defeated. So the collective bargaining agreement fails. The last time this happened, the feedback was that giving makeup salary increases was not something the community was interested in doing.
It was just too much.
It was too much money overall, and they disagreed with the concept that we were doing that. And there was also a question about whether we had done enough with healthcare. So based on that feedback from the public, when it was defeated, we then went back and renegotiated. And in that case, we had to go to the court and ask for special permission to have a meeting. Had we had this article on there, we wouldn't have had to do the court.
So there may be different terms that are presented based off of a renegotiation.
It gives us the ability to renegotiate based off of the feedback.
To me, like.
I'm a no. I'm a no.
And then that gives the the public the opportunity to say, so, so here's the other thing, full disclosure. Because Litchfield went to the court and because Litchfield got that authorization, the legislature closed that out and took that aspect of it out of the law. And so no longer can a community, no means no, and if people say no to three, the only legal recourse you have is that if the voters say, but we'll let you have one more crack at it, with an article crafted the way Article Four is, that's the only way that you can come back and have a special meeting. Otherwise, our teachers would go a year without raises. We would have every single faculty member then a step behind, and we would be fighting that battle again. You would lose people.
Absolutely.
Without a doubt.
Yep.
You did last time, and you would the next time, and so.
Really good people.
You know, the the purpose of this is to let the voters, and if the voters say no to four, and no to three, and no to four, then that's exactly what's going to happen.
That's the marching orders.
That's the marching orders. But the voters in the past have supported, I think the times that we've put this type of article on, that the voters have supported. Yeah, go ahead, negotiate again and give us another bite at the apple down the road at the board's discretion. So it's up to you.
I really do want to hear more, like, now that I understand it better, I really do want to hear more about what your opposition to it is.
These guys spent, spent a lot of time trying to negotiate a fair contract, or I think it's a fair contract. And I think if the people in town say no, then no means no.
But what would be coming back?
Litchfield once again made history with this thing last time.
Opposed, abstained, passes recommended five zero zero.
Excellent, thank you. The next one.
I'll make a motion to approve Article Four.
Is just a contingency in case, right?
Second.
Yeah.
And please note, the Budget Committee does not vote on this, because it's a non-budgetary item.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, I'm not a big fan of this, I can bite at the apple thing.
It's for voter approval. We can't do it without voter approval.
Yeah, I, in my, in my mind, I, I would agree with you, Peter, but this is giving the voters the choice, right? So if they want it, they can vote for it. If they don't.
Mm-hmm, they say no.
They say no.
And so, functionally speaking, what, can we just talk through really quickly, like what type of scenario would, like, would they have voted down the budget?
Article Three fails.
Right.
No, it's, it's tied to Article Three being defeated. So the collective bargaining agreement fails. The last time this happened, the feedback was that giving makeup salary increases was not something the community was interested in doing.
It was just too, too much.
It was too much money overall, and they disagreed with the concept that we were doing that. And there was also a question about whether we had done enough with healthcare. So based on that feedback from the public, when it was defeated, we then went back and renegotiated. And in that case, we had to go to the court and ask for special permission to have a, a meeting. Had we had this article on there, we wouldn't have had to do the court.
So there may be different terms that are presented based off of a renegotiation.
It gives us the ability to renegotiate based off of the feedback.
Like.
I'm a no.
Okay.
I'm a no.
And then that gives the, the public the opportunity to say, so, so here's the other thing, full disclosure. Because Litchfield went to the court, and because Litchfield got that authorization, the legislature closed that out and took that aspect of it out of the law. And so no longer can a community, no means no, and if people say no to three, the only legal recourse you have is that if the voters say, but we'll let you have one more crack at it, with an article crafted the way Article Four is, that's the only way that you can come back and have a special meeting. Otherwise, our teachers would go a year without raises. We would have every single faculty member then a step behind, and we would be fighting that battle again. You would lose people.
Absolutely.
Without a doubt.
Yep.
You did last time, and you would the next time. And so.
Really good people.
You know, to, the, the purpose of this is to let the voters, and if the voters say no to four, and no to three, and no to four, then that's exactly what's gonna happen.
That's the marching orders.
That's the marching orders. But the voters in the past have supported, I think the times that we've put this type of article on, that the voters have supported. Yeah, go ahead, negotiate again, and give us another bite at the apple down the road at the board's discussion. So it's up to you.
I, I really do wanna hear more, like now that I understand it better, I really do wanna hear more about what your opposition to it is.
These guys spent, spent a lot of time trying to negotiate a fair contract, what I think is a fair contract, and I think if the people in town say no, then no means no. And.
But, but what would be coming back?
Litchfield, once again, made history with this thing last time.
Didn't make history, there was precedent before that.
But what would be coming, what would be coming back, though, might be something.
A different.
Like, the town may have said to the teachers, hey, listen, we don't, we don't support what you've presented in front of us. And so my, like, my understanding now is it's not just, okay, but no, here, look at it again and revoke. It, it may be we've gone back to the table and tried to renegotiate something. Will you consider this, right? And the town is still gonna have the opportunity to consider that. It's not like it's forcing it down their throats, like now you have to accept this.
No, I know, but what happens when you do these special meetings is you get one side or the other who go out, go out and vote. You don't get, I don't remember how many people voted on the last time you went through this, but it was a very small number, because it's a special election, it's not part of the regular routine, and you just don't get good attendance. So I don't think you get a representative opinion from the town.
That's an interesting perspective, I appreciate you sharing that. I think my, my opinion on this is, if it were to fail, I think it could have catastrophic results for staffing. And so I like the ability to put it before the voters again. If it was something that didn't allow them to have a say in it, I would be opposed to that.
Sure, and I think we can still put it in front of the voters, I just, and if the voters say yes, then, then we do it.
Understood. Thank you for the discussion, I appreciate that.
I appreciate where you're coming from and your perspective, but I think as a School Board member, we have a duty to make sure we have a contract. And so if, for whatever reason, the town says no to this, and we have the ability to go back and renegotiate, I think as School Board members, it's our obligation and our duty to do so.
I agree, but I think there would need to be diligence done on why it failed.
Absolutely, completely.
And what, and what can we do?
Completely.
Agreed.
But I think we need the option to do it, and I think it, being a five zero zero vote versus a four one zero vote says something to the town.
I mean, I, you know. Is that me?
I, I.
Okay, sorry, I'm like, I'm, I'm trying to look up.
I look up there, I'm like, what is going on?
That is a good ringtone.
No, I was trying to look it up too. It's not easy to find.
I, I, I agree that obviously, I would love for us all to be able to vote in favor of, like, to, to have done enough work to get to a point where we could vote five zero zero and everything. I, I mean, I respect, I appreciate you giving me your analysis on it, I respect it, so, you know.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor of approving the language of Article Four, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained, this passes four one zero.
All right, let me come back to it, I'm gonna record that. Peter, I'm also going to, like, what I was looking for is I wanna see how many people voted in March, and how many people voted in the special election. My recollection is the turnout was as robust as it was in the spring, but I just wanna make sure that, you know, if we're gonna state that, that special elections have a lower turnout, let's make sure we look at our facts from the last time. So I'll, I'll pull those two numbers and email them out to the board.
Thank you.
So Article Five is then the collective bargaining agreement with LSSA that was ratified by the board tonight.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Oh, that was kind of a tie.
I'll let Matt take it, because he negotiated it.
Questions or comments?
Uh, just, I, I, I wanna point out again for the public that the way this is worded, the amount for twenty-three, twenty-four, the appropriation already exists. It's the money that we're not spending. So it's worded that the hundred and seventy thousand has already been raised and appropriated toward wages with LSSA. We're then gonna use that money to hopefully retain the people that we have and attract people to come and finish out the year with us by having more competitive salaries. And then that'll carry into next year if the voters approve it. And so this, this is critical, we're mission critical on getting something done here, and this is what we've come up with.
We have a motion and a second. Further question or comment? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, this is recommended by the School Board five zero zero.
Thank you. The next one is the same conversation as the previous. Article Six is where the voters can authorize the board to call one additional meeting to address cost items only, and that's all that is in Article Five for cost items, so you could do that.
Second, questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstained, four one zero.
All right. Article Seven is to raise and appropriate a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars going into the Employee Benefit Reserve Fund.
Yep. What's the highlighted language?
The highlighted language is that that's the amount raised for severance payments that were not paid out in fiscal year twenty twenty-three. And so Doug is the one who came up with the dollar, I think, or.
Holly did.
Holly did. So that's the money that we've already raised for separation payments, and we're not gonna make those, because people did not separate. Now we're gonna park that money, we're not gonna raise that money again. This has turned out to be really very beneficial to the taxpayers. Raise it once, and then park it until you need it.
I think it has the support of the Budget Committee, if I remember correctly, or a lot of members of the Budget Committee.
It should, I mean.
But I, why is the text highlighted still then? Is that, cannot be regular?
I, I, you mean the yellow highlighted? I, I'm not quite clear on that, so let me find out why that's in highlighted.
Well, I don't know if we wanna make a motion to approve it, if we're not sure it's final language.
It is, it's italicized and it's highlighted, and I'm not clear who did that. I'll get an answer from Gordon on that.
Either way, I'm, I'm in favor of recommending this.
I am, but I wanna make sure that language has been vetted through legal and it's final before, if legal, for whatever reason, hasn't reviewed it.
In, in my view, I think that sentence in highlighted needs to be removed.
Well, that's, I'm wondering if that sentence is supposed to be in the voter guide versus.
I'm confused.
I think it's beneficial to be there, though, I think.
Oh, I agree. It's more information, but can it be there? You know, we're already saying we can't do a table, or we don't, we're not sure we can do a table, we're not sure we can add this additional information here. It's, it gives it flavor, for sure, and it provides people with information.
Right now, so let's just wait on that one and see.
So we're gonna.
If you can talk to Gordon tomorrow, you can ask him why, why it's.
Park number seven.
Gordon took out the word unassigned, that's the only thing he took out.
Yeah.
So I guess I might, I mean, I just kinda wrote this up expecting Gordon to kinda change it a decent amount, maybe, but, but I don't think he.
Hit that sentence, or did Gordon?
I think I wrote that sentence.
Gordon reviewed it and Gordon edited by taking a word out.
Did you?
I don't believe, I don't think I highlighted it.
Let, we'll clarify it with Gordon.
That's fine. We can vote on it, at the same time we vote on Article One.
It was, to Doug's point, Gordon took out the word, we often say unassigned fund balance.
Yeah.
It's a fund balance, it is unassigned, it's a fund balance. So he's taking the word unassigned out consistently throughout, so.
And Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve Articles Eight and Nine.
Efficiency, second. Any questions? Comments?
The, the only, the only thing to point out is that these are ordered, so eight and nine are fifty percent of the fund balance remaining after seven.
Yep.
So you could be putting a hundred and twenty-five thousand, you could be putting, if, if, that's two hundred and fifty between the two, so say there's two hundred thousand, you would put half of it into each, so the same, same language as we had last year.
It wouldn't be a hundred and twenty-five in the first, and then the seventy-five in the second, I thought that's why they were ordered that way.
It's fifty percent of the fund balance remaining. So we wanted to put the same amount into the two.
Because I thought we switched it, I think it was.
We moved.
We moved the maintenance up above capital improvements.
Yeah.
Last meeting, right, we changed, we flipped the order.
You did, which typically would.
Fifty-fifty.
The order, yeah.
Because that fifty-fifty wasn't there in the last version.
Correct, we, we had blank percent, or we said we should add percentages like the last language.
So I went and grabbed the language we used last year that had that fifty, or, last year it wasn't fifty, it was like.
Seventy, thirty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Twenty or something, I don't know, I can't do math, but.
It doesn't have to be fifty-fifty, it doesn't have to add up to a hundred percent either. You could add up to less than a hundred percent, and the remainder would go to fund balance too, so. There are options for it, but by fifty-fifty, it's going to do the same amount for.
It still says unassigned in that, in Article Eight.
Does it really?
In Article Nine.
Uh-oh. That might be me.
Yep, it does say.
Article Eight and Nine.
One, two, three, fourth line down on the very right end.
Yeah, he didn't catch those unassigned. I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut him out, because he's removing them, so.
Okay.
So are you changing your motion to as amended?
As amended.
And I'm fine with the second, yeah. All right, we have a motion and a second, we've had some discussion, is there any further questions or comments?
Article Nine, third line from the bottom.
On the left.
On the left.
There it is.
All those in favor of approving Articles Eight and Nine, or the language in Eight and Nine, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, this passed five, or recommended by the School Board five zero zero.
All right, thank you for that work. Notice that last year's, where it says sign this blank day of February, we actually signed it in February last year, so that language, I, I, I'm assuming we're gonna get this signed more quickly than that, but I just left that in.
Okay.
And gotta read his name there, so we're in good shape. Matt, two Ts?
Yeah.
Sorry.
I didn't even notice.
Well, I just looked at it, and I'm like, I don't think that's right.
Okay, anything else on the annual meeting warrant, Budget Committee action, legal timeline, anything else in that vein? Hearing none, moving on to School Board comments.
One comment I had, and just an observation, as looking, as I was looking through the January school lunches, and for both at least GMS and LMS, is I noticed Gil's Pizza now is every other week, as opposed to every Wednesday, which is a change. I, I didn't know if there was a driver behind that, if you knew there was a driver behind that, but I, I know.
Community questioned about that.
Well, there's been, there's been a question about cost of Gil's pizza, right, but we've also said how much the kids enjoy that meal, and, right, all that jazz.
Brings in more people.
I don't, what, what I heard was that the community thought it went to once a month, so I, I'm not, I can go back and ask.
I think it only went to once. I see, on the January menu, it's every other week.
You gotta have pizza every week.
And this was not the Gil's Pizza Day, by the way.
Is it regular pizza day?
Stuff crust.
Oh.
Yeah, no one's.
It was what today?
Stuff crust.
It's always good.
I know, my, my wife told my daughter, I was like, what?
Any other School Board comments?
I don't, I think we have no clue on that.
I'm curious if there's any cost, based upon recent conversations about lunch prices, if that was a cost-conscious decision.
No, I don't believe it was, because her analysis was that the plate cost was offset by the revenue driver, so I, I'm surprised to hear that.
Maybe it was an availability issue or something for January.
I did have a question, uh, uh, not a pizza-related question, but kind of. When we had, at the last meeting, we talked about what the per-plate cost was.
Yeah.
But do you roll in any of the overhead, any employee costs into that price, or just the cost of the food?
I, I think when she presented that, it was food costs and the food cost.
Serving container.
And the assumption is labor remains the same.
Yeah, there's certain, there's certain, like, like for the.
But that's part of the food service budget is employee costs, right?
Yes, paper products and things like that.
So it's never, you're never gonna catch up until you charge people ten bucks for, for the one. Because you gotta pay for the employees.
Well, that's part.
Something, seven bucks.
But that's part of the problem, right?
Ninety-seven, it's five, five, I think, was.
Five fifty, five twenty-five or something, yeah.
Made it, that made it self-funding.
Yeah.
Because I thought we were supposed to.
Yeah, that was that chart.
I, I even have to take, find Doug's spreadsheet and.
School Board comments? All right.
Happy New Year.
Yes, well, off to a good start, semester closing, I'm looking forward to seeing some of the data and whatnot that comes out with the first semester.
I am too.
Yeah, it'll be interesting. Manifest has three signatures, I don't know if this side of the table even just wants to look.
I feel like Matt and I are always two of the three.
See, I asked him, and he pointed this direction.
Because Doug sits on this side of the table.
It's true, closest.
All right, seeing School Board comments are done, Manifest is done, and we already did our community input. Is there a motion to move into non-public session?
So made.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, you're an hour early.
Shh, shh, jeez.
I'm sorry.
You can't say that out loud.
Remember when we were done at eight-thirty?
All right, we are now in non-public session, RSA ninety-one.
We're an hour late, sorry.
Yeah, we're, we're.
I was on daylight savings.
Okay, RSA ninety-one, A three. A, the dismissal, promotion, or compensation of any public employee, or the disciplining of such employee, or the investigation of any charges against him unless the employee affected, one, has a right to a meeting, and two, requests that the meeting be open, in which case the request shall be granted. B, the hiring of any person as a public employee. C, matters which if discussed in public would likely adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of the body or agency itself, unless such person requests an open meeting. D through I, C citation, I think that's an L, but I'm not sure. And for tonight's purposes, we are moving into non-public session based off of, I think, C, correct? There's no A or B?
There's very little.
Okay, so I believe we're moving into non-public to discuss C.
Perfect.
All right, thank you very much. Next meeting will be on, well, we have the bond meeting on January eleventh. Our next School Board, regular School Board meeting will be January seventeenth. And thanks a lot, and everyone have a good night.